All right, I'm gonna call to order this regular city council meeting for Troutdale, March fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. Sarah, can I have the vote, please?
Yes, Council Rittma.
Here.
Council Caswell. Council One.
Here.
Council White. Council Wittrin.
Present.
Council Glance.
Present.
Mayor Lauer.
Here.
Do we have any agenda updates, Mr. Trump?
Mr. Yeah, the only update is just a caution, Mayor, that if item number if item number eight point one does not pass, then we will need eight point two. But if eight point one does pass, we don't need eight point two. That's the only caveat on the agenda.
Okay, good. Move on to agenda item number two, public comment on non-agenda consent agenda items is welcome at this time. Public comment on the agenda items will be taken at the time the item is considered. Public comments should be directed to the presiding officer in limited matters of community interest or related to matters which may or could come before council. Each speaker shall be limited to five minutes for each agenda item unless a different amount of time is allowed by the presiding officer with consent of the council. The council of mayor should avoid immediate or protracted responses to citizen comments. I'm gonna open it up to Zoom. If anybody on Zoom wishes to make public comment, now's the time. Go ahead and unmute yourselves, take your name and city of residence for the record. Nobody on Zoom? Anybody in council chambers wishes to make a comment? Now's the time. Go ahead and approach the desk, state your name and city of residence for the record. Good, nobody in council. I'm ready for this public comment. Let's move on to agenda item number three, consent agenda, three point one minutes. November eighth, twenty twenty-two, regular meeting, December thirteenth, twenty twenty-two, regular meeting, and January tenth, twenty twenty-three, regular meeting.
Need adoption.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Second by Council One. All in favor of consent agenda, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, signify by saying nay. All right, consent agenda passes. Thank you very much. Agenda item number four, presentation and update from Mount Hood Community College. Dr. Lisa Scari, MHCC president. Mr. Andrew Spear, MHCC board chair, and Diane McKeel, MHCC vice board chair. The floor is yours, and thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you for your questions while I got a little bit of technology up. Well, I wanna thank you, Mayor Lauer, and the rest of the council members for having us back. I think this is our third year for coming back and just kinda giving you an update. So this year, we've got some some tidbits, but also some exciting things that have happened with the college that we would like to share. For those of you who may not know me, Lisa Scari, President of Mount Hood, and I have been serving in this capacity since two thousand and eighteen.
Diane McKeel, I'm the board vice chair, and it's nice to see you all.
Hi, everyone. Andrew Spear, I'm this year's chair, and I've been in the on the board for three and a half years now and and also an alumni of the college as well.
Welcome.
So, a little bit about the college, just kinda bring everyone up to speed. We are the third largest community college in Oregon. We've battled back and forth with Trucker for number two, and along with Amazon, FedEx, and Boeing, we are the one of the largest employers in East Des Moines. Last year, we had a little over a thousand employees and served over eighteen thousand five hundred students. And seven hundred and fifty-four of those students were from Troutdale, and we also had a hundred and eleven employees that lived in the university. As you know, our district is a beautifully rich mix of cultures, which we see reflected in our student body. We're just over forty percent of students who identify as students of color. And as you know, our district is home to large populations of immigrant refugee communities, which really enhance our community and cultural mix. Our programs reflect this community, and we really have strength in our current technical education, our adult basic education, and our English as a second language programs. I like to think of us as the state's career college, and I say that because thirty-one percent of our students are enrolled in some form of career technical education, which may not sound like a lot, but that's more than double our sister institution in the region. Now, part of the success comes from our works with the trade, our work with the trades. We work with twenty different trade organizations, serving apprentices in everything from construction, electrical, sheet metal, glazers, roofers, and masons, to name a few. But we also innovate in other areas. We are one of the first two community colleges in the state to be approved both by the state and by our crediting bodies to offer an applied baccalaureate degree. So in twenty twenty-six, we will graduate our first class of bachelor students in cybersecurity. Quite excited about that. In addition, we recently received money from the state through Future Ready Oregon, and we're expecting some significant expansion in our short-term training programs. These are flexible programs that have easy entry-exit points and really help students build a career portfolio. Another grant related to this was around semiconductors. I don't know if any of you saw the news last night with the big announcement with Microchip. We've been partnering with them, and one of the items we've done with the Future Ready Oregon money is we have a mobile semiconductor training lab, which allows us to go out and train either onsite or in places throughout the community. On our first class, we're really hoping to get twenty students between Microchip and on semi. Within the first week, we had over ninety applicants for just Microchip alone. So now we're trying to figure out, right, how we have the students. Instructor seems to be the challenge, but it's a good problem to have. And just wanna say, right, this kind of success and this kind of growth doesn't just happen. It takes vision, and it takes leadership. It takes intentional planning and a lot of alignment with our community needs, and it takes a well-crafted strategic plan. That I would like to turn to.
Thank you. So our strategic plan was developed over the course of the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two academic school year. And because community engagement is so important to us, we solicited feedback from community members, students, employees, partners, and stakeholders. The goals were to create a transparent process that engaged all Mount Hood Community College constituents, to have a final product that was an expression of our values, as we are a community college, develop an actionable plan to drive all other planning, including annual budgets. The highly interactive process provided many opportunities for input through interviews, focus groups, surveys, and a half-day charrette. We collected honest and constructive feedback about issues and priorities related to Mount Hood. Wanting to make sure we heard all voices, surveys were offered in seven different languages, and we held a focus group in Spanish and had translators available for all sessions. Community input came from focus groups with our school districts, elected officials, our cities, chambers of commerce, business associations, PDE, Pacific Northwest Carpenter's Institute, Unite Oregon, Rosewood Initiative, and El Programa Hispanic, to name a few. In addition, we broadly shared this survey with these networks. Our new strategic plan pays special attention to the needs of our changing student body and our district demographics, industry trends, and supporting employees with the focus on student success. As you can imagine, we heard a lot of great feedback, and we were able to organize it into themes. So in general, students and staff feel safe and welcomed at Mount Hood Community College, and they feel that the college is committed to diversity, equity, and inclusion. Students rank academic programs, financial aid, and location as the college's top three springs, while the availability of classes and technology were seen as the top two weaknesses. From all the data collected, eight key opportunities were identified for the college. The built environment does not offer many opportunities for social gathering and interaction. The campus layout is confusing, and wayfinding can be difficult for those who've never been on a college campus or are first-generation students and families. Decision-making is not always transparent. Our internal stakeholders want to understand how decisions made further our goals. Difficulty in tracking student success. The college could improve data collection and tracking of student success to better understand what works. Many students are unaware of the services available to them to help them succeed. The college needs to better align and integrate student services and distribute information about these services to all employees and students. Pathways from K-12 to MHCC and beyond are not clearly spelled out. So the sooner a child can have a positive experience on or around a college campus, the sooner it will reinforce the sense of belonging, as well as engagement and support of parents is important, especially for our first-generation college students. Business partnerships vary in strength. Keeping programs relevant to industry needs was identified as a top future challenge for Mount Hood Community College. Intentional relationship building with businesses and trades will help to identify and respond to industry needs. We heard how Mount Hood Community College has robust relationships with some industry leaders and businesses, in particular, the industries directly involved in the CTE programs, yet relationships with other businesses could be better. The needs of a highly diverse student body are not fully addressed. Respondents cited community relationships as a key opportunity area that the college can leverage. While the college has strong existing partnerships with local community-based organization, there was a lack of coordination between college departments and services when connecting with those organizations. Community-based organizations are a direct and trusted link to underrepresented communities, and this relationship should be better utilized and formalized. Community is not aware of the wide range of MHCC programs and services. It was a bit disheartening to hear the college presence is not felt within the community, but not surprising considering the results of the twenty sixteen college bond measure, where fifty-four seven percent of community members voted no. This feedback does give us clarity in how to improve. The community is interested in being invited onto campus for events and informational sessions, and the community wants us to show up as an ally and an active participant. So I will turn it to Andrew for the plan.
As we work through this process to develop the plan and the data that fed into it, we use the we centered in on equity as our outcome. And so you'll see from this slide that the plan lives under the umbrella of our equity statement, and that is then guided by our vision, mission, and values. While you're reading those, I'll walk through the five areas that we look to address in our plan in terms of actionable steps. First is improve teaching and learning practices processes to support learning and successes for all students. So that looks like objectives include effective and inclusive teaching, improving assessment, and reducing overall grades D, F, withdrawals, and incomplete rates. Number two, provide a range of educational and support programs and services needed to allow students to meet their educational, career, and personal goals. Specific objectives include things like alignment of programs with industry and community needs, assessing student needs, and designing responsive programs and services. Three is aligning college's organizational structures, systems, and processes to reflect diversity of community's research. Specific objectives include things like an equity lens in all decision-making, expanding our student basic needs support, and seeking sources of revenue to support student success. Four is provide facilities and technology platforms to serve the needs of all students. Objectives include things like strengthening online learning, improving student and employee-facing electronic systems, including the website. Five is increase our visibility and strengthen connection between the college and our local and regional community partners. So that looks like things like authentically engaging with historically excluded multilingual communities, expanding expanding work-based learning, partnering with local organizations to create a community hub to exchange resources and share ideas. Next, I'll cover accountability. So for five years now, when you or from five years from now, when you think of MHCC, you don't expect that you'll think of what we've done to our website, how teaching is different, or what systems we've changed. But we do want you to feel as if the college is an integral, 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 intercommunity and a good, good investment of public resources. To this end, the board set indicators so that we can track our impact on the community so that we can hold ourselves accountable, and specifically, by twenty twenty-seven, we expect to see an improvement in student success for all students regardless of race, age, gender, or income. Because getting an degree or certificate is an ultimate goal, our completion rates will increase to forty percent. Because progression is linked to completion, our retention rates will increase to seventy percent. Because credit accumulation is linked to retention, forty percent of our students will complete twenty-three of twenty-three or more of their credits in their first year. Number two, achievement of eighty percent of students meeting core learning outcomes for all students regardless of race, age, gender, or income. Number three, an improvement in our community connections. Seventy percent of residents say the MHCC is a good steward of taxpayer dollars. However, thirty percent of our high school students will attend MHCC after graduation because too many of our area high school students are not going to any post-secondary education after coming out of high school. They are coming, they are showing up to Mount Hood several years after graduation. Number four, improvement, improve our campus diversity, equity, and inclusion. Employee diversity will reflect our district diversity within five percentage points because students thrive in environments where they see themselves and role models that look like them. Student diversity will, we expect that student diversity will exceed our district diversity by five percentage points because if we are successful in achieving our commitment to access and equity, our diverse communities will find the college as a place that they can succeed in.
So we just took you on a whirlwind tour of fifteen months of work and tried to encapsulate it into like seven slides. So what I'd like to share with you, we have both a QR code and two links to both our strategic plan, which lists us all in detail. Also, one of the wonderful things that came out of this was a pretty thorough environmental scan that has collected a whole lot of district information, but it's not just about Mount Hood. So it talks about residents, various things. So if you're ever looking for some data, this might be a good place to look, so you don't have to do it. It's a good place to start, and then you could do further research, but wanted to share that with you. From here, one of the things we commit to doing is, as Andrew mentioned, right, we've got a five-year plan, and we've got accountability measures that we will be both tracking and reporting on. We will be doing and report to the community as far as what, how we're progressing, how we're doing, and what we're learning. And we will also be publishing those results. We're trying to make our outcomes very clear so that the community understands both what we're doing and how we're doing. We'd also be interested in opening it up now to find out if there's other ways you as a council might be interested in receiving certain information or if you also have other questions. At this point, I will try it back.
Yeah, do you, could I get the screen back? Is that okay? That way I can just see the counselors that are at home. Are there any counts, questions for council thoughts or recommendations? Council Glance?
I have a couple of questions. On the online learning, is that generally, do most online classes take place entirely online? Do they come in for testing? And what kind of percent of classes are offered online?
So at the time of the survey, we were more online just because we were still kind of in COVID. At this point, we're about sixty percent in person, forty percent online, and and there's a hybrid in between where students are doing a mix of both in-person and online for a class. We're we're tracking that because the one thing we're finding is while there is an interest in some students, especially for certain classes, to be in person, there is also this desire for the online because it rounds out flexibility. So especially for older families, right? They can get one class in, but they might have kid responsibilities or whatnot. And so we're really trying to be sensitive and make sure that what we're offering is matching what our students are needing.
Okay, and do you still have the nursing program?
Yes, we do. There was a bit of a, what do I call it? There was a headline that was that misrepresented the program cuts that we did. Our nursing program is still in place. We also have a very strong CNA program. The one that did, we pulled back from is the LPN program. And part of it is working with our employers. The demands were at the CNA and the nursing level. So, so yes, nursing program's still there. In fact, we're trying to figure out how we can expand part of that. And looking at right now, the legislature of trying to get approval for statewide, the Bachelor of Science in Nursing to be offered at the community college level, which we feel would greatly expand both access, but also affordability at a nursing practice.
Last question, do you know, like on the semiconductor classes and stuff like that, that are definitely tied to employers, do the people who take those classes have to pay them back if they don't stay at that employer for a certain period of time?
Oh, so I can speak to the current ones we have, which is partnership on semi and Microchip. Those are current employees, and so what the companies are doing is actually providing space and time for those employees to take those classes and funding it. And so if an employee was to leave the employer, you know, I can't speak to what they would do there, but since these have really been set up for them and incumbent workers. I mean, I I just have to say our our two semiconductor partners have been wonderful in this and trying to figure out how to be flexible.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other comments or questions from council? Council Wittrin?
Is your strategic plan link, is there much more detail in that link? You gave a very high-level view, percentages, goals, but, you know, I'm curious to know where you started from, if you've got this goal, what businesses you hope to partner with, what, you know, it was very, very high level. So if they're wondering how much more detail.
Yes. So the strategic plan link will give you a little bit more detail because under each of those goals, we have anywhere from five to seven objectives, but they're still kind of broad because what's happening now during our institutional planning processes is each department is figuring out what specific tactics they're doing this coming year that will feed into those goals and also those key performance indicators. So at this point in time, we don't have that detail, but next year, when we come back, we're gonna have some of those specifics of who, who, like you mentioned, employers we've worked with and who are working for, you know.
So this is just kind of the starting line?
Yes.
Okay, and then the KPIs will change for next year?
Yeah.
Okay.
And we'll have a lot more data for you.
Gotcha, gotcha.
And a dashboard that we will have public that people can go.
And then I and then I comment as well as you were saying, hey, how can we partner with the community more? And I guess is I think about First Fridays and stuff like that. I haven't seen too much involvement from from you or any booth setup or anything locally touching the community, the families here in the neighborhood. So, you know, definitely that, as we get into summertime here, I think that local presence would be, I hope would be welcome.
Yeah. Absolutely. Council White?
Yeah, just a comment. I raised my kids here at Troutdale, and they they went from Reynolds High School to to the college, so they're alumni as well. And my son took the fish hatchery program, worked at the Sandy Hatchery. And so, and what a great program, and that's a that's a hard program to find. So hats off to you on that. And my daughter mainly took prep courses and went on from there. But it was a big cost savings for our family to have that at our disposal. And also, I think it was an easy step for them because the going to Reynolds High School, so many of, it's almost like Mount Hood and Reynolds are tied together because they do the football games. My kids were in band and orchestra and drama, and those facilities are awesome to to use at the college. And I know you guys have a lot of programs for for Reynolds High School students at the college. And I think what it really does is it helps, it makes it so college isn't so intimidating for those high school students. So keep that up, and we appreciate that relationship between the younger high school kids, allowing them to go there and actually having programs for them. So I appreciate that a great deal.
Anybody else have comments, questions?
We would love to invite you all to come to campus.
Yeah, I think that would be great.
Yes.
I think it would be a great field. I've been on campus. I was a student there many years ago. Not many, but a while ago.
I'll say many.
Two thousand and eight, I think. I was nine, I don't remember. But yeah, no, I think that would be great. I think it would be fun to get everybody together and go and spend some time and and walk around on a Sunday. And just, like I said, just kind of spend some time and engulf what is actually happening there, you know, I think that'd be really fun.
Yeah, we would love to have.
Other than that, any other partnerships or anything that that we can do as a city and as a council, we're open for it. You know, we we appreciate the partnership that we have with Mount Hood Community College. So whatever you can do to strengthen that and keep it moving forward, we're all for it.
I think as part of the strategic plan, as we move forward, we're looking at a master facilities plan and then have a forecast out there for the going back out for a bond. So, you know, part of our long-term objective as the board is to continue the community engagement portion and relationships with the states that we serve. So looking for that support community-wide as we think about that in terms of the city.
Yeah, I think that would warrant another meeting, another sit down during the council session and discuss that. I think I would look forward to that.
Thank you.
Nothing else from council. I think that's it. So thank you very much. We appreciate you coming by. All right, we're gonna move on to agenda item number five, a report from the Port of Portland, Emerald, I hope I don't ruin it, Bo.
You nailed it.
Did I? Awesome. With the Port of Portland, welcome.
Trying to make sure we're in the, look, we'll get into the frame here. There we go. Thank you.
Yeah, it's gonna be a shame to share the microphone.
We will share the mic. Hi, everybody. My name is Emerald Bog. I'm the Director of Policy and Regional Affairs at the Port of Portland. It is lovely to see those of you I've met before, and it's great to see those of you I've not met yet. And so there are some familiar faces with me tonight. And so I'm very fortunate tonight to be flanked by actual subject matter experts and the matters that we're going to cover. So if I So if I seem calm, that's why. But by way of introduction, um, the Port of Portland is a public agency. We're a special district of the state of Oregon. Our mission is to build, share prosperity through trade, travel, and economic development. Excuse me. Uh, we come to this council annually and have a conversation about the Troutdale Reynolds Industrial Park, also known as TRIP, and the Troutdale Airport. We have also had conversations in the past about the Port of Portland generally and more broadly. Tonight, we will focus our discussion and updates on these two facilities. But I want to extend particularly for those of you who don't know us as well, an offer for a broader Port of Portland briefing. And so that we could get to know each other better and just, uh, also offer that. We're open to any questions you have just about where we are. We shared a written report that gave an update on, um, current developments out at TRIP and, um, around the forty mile loop trail. We continue to be committed to seeing this project through. We were, um, I will say unpleasantly unsurprised by the increase in costs based on inflation. And I know that for those of you who know what construction projects are doing these days, you know that they are getting more expensive. We're thankful that Metro came in and helped us close some amount of that funding gap. And we are hopeful, um, that we will see some support also from ODOT to the Oregon Community Paths Grant. Thank you again for Troutdale's support, um, for that grant application. One way or another, we are on track, um, to see this project through. We're pulling permits and are, uh, set to begin construction this summer. So I will introduce who's with me today to get more into detail about both the Troutdale Reynolds Industrial Park, our broader work in, um, economic development in East Multnomah County, and, uh, and the Troutdale Airport. I will begin by handing it over to Ken Anderton, our Senior Manager of Real Estate Development, and Emily Bauer, our Senior Manager of Equitable Development.
All right. It's great to see you, Mayor, councilors. Uh, it's been a little while since we've came up here. I used to do this quite often. I was thinking, uh, the port started developing TRIP right around two thousand seven. I think I made my first appearance in front of council right around twenty eleven. And it's been a great journey of partnership. And we've had a lot of, you know, as major complicated construction projects go, a lot of hits and misses along the way, but you know, the last several years, it's been smooth sailing. We, we're done with the majority of our construction. Our forty mile loop trail that you mentioned is our last little piece that we gotta get completed. And now it's just the fun part of recruiting companies to TRIP. And we were able to, you know, early days, get FedEx in the door, phase one. And then Amazon, phase two, which is pretty incredible, uh, two large companies that are employing. I think, uh, I think we got a total of about forty-two hundred employees right now. TRIP ebbs and flows based on seasonality. But the amount of investment, uh, has paid off. It's really a true story of jurisdictions working together, both local, port, state, and federal. And, uh, we get calls all the time about, you know, guys, how'd you guys pull off the superfund site? Seven hundred acre superfund site to create all these jobs. What we do need to do though, is we, we still have a few more lots that we need to market and fill. We continue to work with Ray's excellent staff to find companies to locate there. They're a little tougher because they're smaller in size. And when you're dealing with a superfund site, the transactional costs are higher for a company. So it's a, it takes a company that will, what they're getting into, their liabilities, et cetera. And then, uh, we've run into a little bit of, uh, you know, issues with the capital markets, uh, this last year with interest rate hikes and that. So what I'd say is, you know, we've had continued interest at TRIP. We continue to run down leads, acting as, you know, an extension of your economic development arm for our, our property we have at TRIP. And, uh, we continue to talk to Ray and team about, you know, potential, essentially companies that might locate to TRIP and any incentives that might be, uh, out there or what we can do to explain to them about what a great place this is to do business. With that, I'm going to transfer this over to my colleague Emily Bauer, and she's going to talk about the future.
Wonderful. Thank you, Emerald and Ken. While I might be new to this room, I'm not, uh, new to the area. I, my, as they've introduced me, I'm Emily Bauer. I'm really heading up the equitable development arm of, um, business development and properties. I've, um, I feel like I'm in good company. I also am an alum from Mount Hood Community College. I grew up, um, the first early beginnings of my childhood were just off of Kane Road and Division. And then we shortly, um, as a naval family moved to Gresham and, and landed there for quite some time. So I have deep roots in the community. I also worked for the, um, city of Gresham for about eight and a half years, largely leading up their, um, Gresham Redevelopment Commission efforts. So, um, I, it's a privilege to be here and an honor to meet all of you in person. And I look forward to meeting, um, all of you in more detail or over our relationship as we develop, um, our efforts in East County. And so you know that, um, the port has played a major role over the last couple of decades, both not just in TRIP that Ken mentioned, but also in the Gresham Vista Business Park, operating the Troutdale Airport, as well as, um, leading a lot of initiatives through the East Metro Economic Alliance Initiative. And so we want to build on that work, right? We want to think about what does the future look like and not, but this is not about redoing plans, but really making sure what have we done well in the region and in the area, and how can we build on that? So the port will be initiating an East County plan. And I, I use the word plan lightly. It really is a strategy for, um, the primary goal to establish a roadmap for the port, to really identify a, a very comprehensive communication and engagement process that will help with, one, targeting business recruitment and business retention for existing port properties. Two, identifying meaningful outcomes to support local jurisdictions, businesses and workforce organizations to achieve their economic development goals, and to aggregate out opportunities of economic improvement to help align funding and capacity to achieve those goals. So really, the port wants to take a role in learning, listening, and leveraging. We will be reaching out this spring and summer to really connect with you, to learn about what's working well for your city and for your community. And we'll be listening to businesses, um, businesses and residents in the field coming to, hopefully being invited and also wanting to initiate opportunities to meet with your community at your festivals and your events that you're holding. Um, and then really think about how can we help, uh, leverage the port's network and expertise where necessary to help meet those community needs. So that's just a, a, an opener. Um, the door is, is wide and we will continue to, to walk through that and, and learn together. So thank you for your time.
I will invite up, um, my colleagues Steve Nagy and Cam Simons to speak a bit about the airport. And why don't I go ahead and make room? You guys stay up here. I'm just the emcee at this point.
Good evening, Mayor, Counselors. Uh, I'm Steve Nagy. I'm the Director of Airports for Operations for the Port of Portland for all three of our airports. It's good to be here, uh, in person again, doing these annual updates. Uh, I'd like to introduce Cam Simons, who is our new Senior Manager for, uh, airports, uh, at PDX, as well as our GA airports. She's been on the, with the position for about two weeks now, so, uh, she's going to be new and, and the, uh, a new member of the community out here as well. Just as a brief update, uh, for those, I see many familiar faces from our times together over the years, as well as new faces. In two thousand sixteen, we completed a two-year master planning effort for the airport, which looked at the long-term, uh, health and viability and, uh, development of the airport and redevelopment of it. And, uh, the recommendations out of that were to reconstruct the runway, uh, including with a recommendation for runway length. We went through a very long, uh, process with the community and, and arrived at a solution that, uh, was going to be good for all of us. We, uh, in order to achieve those, obviously we have to align with federal, with the FAA for federal grants. Uh, it was a significantly expensive project. We were, and we completed that, uh, planning effort in two thousand sixteen. We did a few enabling projects and we were starting into the planning for redevelopment and reconstruction of the runway right in, as two thousand twenty, right as the pandemic started. And, uh, at, obviously like most municipalities, that, uh, the pandemic greatly affected our revenue and our ability to deliver projects with the FAA. Across our system, we essentially reduced our capital plan over the ten-year horizon by half. So we, uh, worked with our federal partners to extend the runway reconstruction out because it was going to be a significant ask for them, uh, and for us to deliver that, uh, with the local component to that, uh, reconstruction effort. In the interim, we realized that we needed to do, uh, some level of, of, of construction activity to just extend the life of the existing facility so that we could get to the point where we could get in line for federal grants again. So what we completed was just this past summer, in the summer of two thousand twenty-two, a one-point-four million dollar project to, uh, resurface, uh, the runway, to crack seal, resurface, repaint, and relocate the threshold at the western end in order to accommodate, uh, as Emerald talked about, the forty mile loop trail, which will go along the far eastern edges of the airport, just outside the runway protection zone, which was a, this, this was a, requirement of the FAA in order to have the trail located there. It had to be located outside of the protection zones for the runway. So that required us to relocate the east end of the runway by three hundred and fifty feet. Uh, so we had to essentially shorten the runway for a, a segment there. Uh, we completed that work last summer. Uh, that should buy us through the end of the decade, uh, as far as life expectancy for the, for the facility that is currently there. And we are working with the FAA right now because we, as, along with them as our partners, we're committed to the outcomes of the two thousand sixteen master plan and the recommendations. It's now a matter of getting ourselves in line again for federal grants and reprogramming. Uh, it's looking more like towards the end of the decade that where that would become a possibility. So we invested the one-point-four million dollars last year to make sure that the facility lasts to that point of a potential reconstruction. Um, operations at the airport continue to be strong. It's still a good flight training base. Partnerships right now with airlines are key and important. Uh, as you can imagine, if you've tried to fly, you've noticed either that flights are unavailable or airlines have had to cancel because of aircraft and, and our pilot shortages. Uh, there are several of the airlines, uh, in this area who have partnered with flight schools to deliver that next generation of training and tech, uh, and pilots. It's not just an overseas thing anymore. It's actually a domestic, uh, real opportunity here for education and growth. And these are really great, um, you know, career fields for, for young adults to go into right now. And so that's where we stand right now with the airport. We completed the kind of, uh, minor rehabilitation project last year in order to buy us some time till we can get in line for a federal grant. We're committed, you know, the port's committed to the outcomes of the two thousand sixteen plan. It's hard to believe it's been seven years, uh, when we think back in time, uh, about that, but we're committed to that. And, uh, we will be engaged with the FAA coming this summer and this fall about the timeframe for when that might become a possibility from them. It's going to be a significant project. And so it's going, it's going to require a significant amount of investment by the FAA to do that.
Do you have plans for, uh, the next one, for years?
That's a, that's a great question. That's one of the things that we are going to engage with them on this summer is, will they want us to do another master plan before they invest in that runway? So if we did, we would probably do one, uh, in the two to three-year timeframe with the outcome then to be of the runway reconstruction by the end of the decade. But that's one of the questions that we're going to be engaged with them this summer is, would they expect us to do something like another planning effort, especially kind of coming out of the pandemic? And how, what changes their mic, their mic, their mic, their ministry? So we don't know yet, but that is a, that is a likely possibility.
More questions?
Oh, yes. Oh, sorry. Yes, questions.
So I got any questions from council? Council glance?
I have a question that, uh, runway length, is that fifty-four hundred now or is that before the three hundred and fifty foot reduction?
The, the runway was five thousand feet before, um, and it is now the three hundred and fifty foot reduction is from that.
So it's what, forty-six hundred?
Uh, yes, I have to get the exact length, but yes.
I was gonna say, I looked on the, uh, uh, port website and it showed it as fifty-four hundred.
We have to update that, so I'll make sure we get that.
Any other comments or questions? Council White?
Yes, uh, you guys should have brought Chris Damton with you.
No, you shouldn't have. He doesn't have a seat in here anymore.
No, you're lucky to have him on your team. He did a real good job while he was at Troutdale.
Yes.
There's my plug for Chris. You know, Troutdale was really involved in the, the last time you guys were looking at the master plan. Ray Young and myself tried to approach, uh, Amazon and FedEx. And all we got out of them was, we know the airport's there, you know, they're very secretive. But we would, we would love to work with you guys on developing and really preserving those businesses that are down there. There's like forty-five businesses. I think we have the only jet aircraft repair shop this side of the Mississippi and they're very specialized businesses. And, um, maybe we've already lost them. I don't know.
No, we've, uh, you know, the pandemic actually, you know, affected aviation across the board. And in many sectors, it was, they, they affected many sectors differently. But we have been successful and most of our businesses have been successful in weathering the, 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 the storms that happened in the last few years. And we have not lost a significant amount. In fact, there is a significant, uh, you know, still demand for private hangars and, and those at the airport. So, uh, I wouldn't say that it is completely back, but it is on a firm footing for the types of businesses that have been historically at the airport. Well, it hasn't grown, but it hasn't decreased in, in, in volume as well.
I was, I went down and looked at the Forest Service Steel Taker Base because they auctioned it off recently. And I was impressed at how beautiful that property is, you know? You think of an airport as just being noisy and the planes come in on a glide. It was very entertaining while I was there just watching planes coming in and landing. And I thought, what a great place to have a restaurant or, you know, shopping and that kind of thing. Because I really think it's underutilized. And I see it as a, an underutilized asset to our, to our city. And I've been to the Redmond Airport and they've, they've really done a nice job with theirs. So just looking for, I just want you to know that we're willing to help. I, I would love to try again, meeting with Amazon or FedEx and see if we can get some interest out of them to do something as well. But, um, I did have one question. I don't know. I'm, I'm really concerned about the illegal camping that's happening. And it's in the protection zone of the runway. So I'm thinking that's something that should be brought up to the FAA.
So there's two things on that. We are pretty, more than pretty, we are vigilant about that. In fact, our staff has been approaching, uh, we have, we are posted, no trespassing, no camping. Our staff approaches, uh, individuals when that occurs. Uh, thank you to the city and others who have been, uh, support to us when we have asked for that type and level of support about trespassing those issues. The port is adding staff, uh, and I, and we'll, or others can talk to that, is adding staff to, to address this very issue regionally, not just here, but regionally. And, and I will also say that the FAA is very interested in this issue because we are, this is not exclusive to Troutdale Airport. It is happening all over. And so they are actually coming up with some policies associated with this on a national level. In fact, the regional administrator for the FAA came back through Portland last fall to take a look at airports in Oregon because of this very issue and, and the, uh, that is happening here. So, uh, I would say that we're going to be getting more guidance from the FAA, but we've also been very vigilant ourself and the port is adding more staff to make sure that we are kind of addressing this from a regional level. I don't know if there's anything more you want to add.
I feel like I have to come in here like, you know. Thank you for the question, Council White. It is a challenge that we all share. I don't have a lot more to add aside from the fact that the port owns an astounding amount of property that is off the beaten path. And, um, no pun intended there. And that is, uh, and that makes this a unique challenge on a lot of our properties. We're working hard to come up with an approach that's programmatic and logical and that prioritizes safety and humanity and compassion and all of the right things. And it's just been extraordinarily difficult balance. On sites like the RPZ, it's, it's a really much more of a straightforward discussion, right? Like you can't, you, one hundred percent kind of people there. So we appreciate when cities, um, who are responsible for law enforcement, or in this case, MCSO, right? Is, are, are responsive to those calls. So thank you. Thank you for your partnership and thank you to MCSO.
Sounds like you're ahead of it.
Yeah. Great.
I worry about their safety, you know, if you have a plane come in and it does happen, you know, it'd be a real tragedy.
The FAA is similarly concerned.
There you go.
Other questions?
There's sort of a question about shortening the runway. Did that, by shortening the runway, did that limit any type of aircraft that can come in or out of there?
No, you know, you know, you know.
And in turn, does that affect a possible business or a hangar that would want? And I don't even know, like, I'm out at Aurora State a lot, which is, I know it's different. But like Aurora's boomed over the last five years, six, 10 years in terms of like what's being built there, what's being stationed there. And so I don't know if you could speak a little bit to?
Sure. The, the limiting factor for the runway is not the length, it's weight bearing capacity. So it, when it gets rebuilt, that's one of the things that we were going to look at is as far as the structure so that it, because it just doesn't have the capability to to handle some of the largest or aircraft. And it's not just the length, it's the weight bearing capacity of it. So limiting the length of it that we did in, in, in conjunction with the relocation of the threshold for the trail for the, for the 40-mile loop trail construction really doesn't limit the size and types of aircraft that are currently using it in either the small, single-engine, medium twins, or turboprop-sized aircraft. There had been some larger business jets before that had been actually too large for the weight-bearing capacity of the runway that shouldn't be operating there at that time. But we can still operate medium-sized aircraft, turboprops, single engines and twins on the available runway length that's still there right now.
And by updating the runway, is that the idea maybe that more businesses or individuals would want to station their aircraft there and build hangars? Is that opportunity available or?
Well, the, the opportunities available, as part of the master plan, we looked at development sites for, for hang, feature hangar development and kind of consolidating that all on the one side of the airport so that we would have the infrastructure associated with that. There, there is always still the limiting factor of the airspace over the Troutdale Airport. And so that sometimes is more the limiting factor than the runway length or the weight-bearing capacity of it because the PDX's airspace overlays Troutdale. And so the ability for a larger aircraft to get in and out is sometimes more difficult than smaller aircraft that can avoid the overflights of the larger aircraft. So that's, that's more one of the limiting challenges for that type of larger aircraft development. It's not so much the desire or the ability to build there. It's the ability for them to get in and out from an air traffic perspective, which is nothing we can control. That's the federal airspace.
Except for when an airplane forgets where it's landing and lands. Forty years ago or something, yeah. Fifty years ago, we had an airliner out there, yeah.
I'd also have to say that small tenants have a hard time accessing capital to, in construction. Construction costs are, are really high for hangar facilities and what it takes to actually build new facilities. So we haven't seen new construction of hangars, I believe, in about 20 to 25 years up there. And it's partly this has capital markets. It's hard to get a financing for it. And some of these businesses are really small and they're just barely able to hang on and make it. So that's, that's a big challenge we see when we went through the last master plan is how can we see future investment where these facilities are getting very aged from a properties standpoint? You know, there's only so long you can keep putting Band-Aids on things. Some of those facilities are 40, 50 years old.
So when you say you don't see much development out there, do you mean out there industry-wide or do you mean out there at Troutdale Airport?
At the Troutdale Airport, there hasn't been capital, there hasn't been a large amount of capital investment, new buildings being built at the airport for, you know, decades and.
So are the buildings there privately owned? Were they port?
Most are, are privately owned. There are a few that are port-owned and some of them were built for, for a different era of like, for example, aircraft repair, which used to happen a lot more frequent. And they were built for a company, Skaggs Airways, those big hangar 1, 2, 3. And they become really expensive to, to maintain and operate as they get older facilities.
Is there opportunities for businesses to own their hangars or develop hangars from the port to create revenue for them, to create maybe revenue for the port? Is there a model that's out there that?
So there's a model to ground lease a site and build new. So, so, but that would require, say, you know, a bank to underwrite that or them to have cash for that or equity.
An amazing business owner that can just pay more out of pocket.
Yeah, exactly.
I will just say, you know, across our system, to your other point, Mayor, we haven't seen a lot of development in the last several years. Ken's right, Troutdale's been, it's been a longer period, but in our other airports as well, we haven't seen as much hangar development in recent years, especially in the medium to smaller general aviation size communities. It's, as Ken mentions, it's harder sometimes for those you know, developers to access the capital necessary to build out those facilities. And so we haven't seen hangar development in a few years at Hillsborough Airport either.
Any other comments or questions from council? All right. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
All right, we're going to move on to agenda item number six, a request for the city of Troutdale to sponsor the 2023 Troutdale Arts Festival, Shanachism County Arts Festival, for its works.
Mayor and Council, thank you very much for allowing me to be here tonight. I am Shanachism and I represent Cascadia Arts Association, the nonprofit that puts together the Troutdale Arts Festival. I feel very alone up here, I have to say. Wow, really interesting tonight to hear about this. So Troutdale Arts Festival, we have to, to bring us back to 2019 when Cascadia Arts Association formed to, to take on the Troutdale Arts Festival, which at that point was the Fall Festival of the Arts, if you remember. And they brought me on to help produce that event. And we got started. Thank you very much to the city for partnering with us on that. We were really excited. And then we had a pandemic and we had to hold off. And then we had to, we got, we geared up and we were ready to go the second time and we had to stop again. So last year, we had what we felt was a great Troutdale Arts Festival at Glen Otto Park. If you remember, Council White, the sinking in the field because the rain hit right before and and parking is a challenge down at Glen Otto Park. So, but.
Unusual weather too for that time of year.
It was, except it snowed on me yesterday. So I don't know. I don't know. Maybe we're in a new weather pattern here. But anyway, we had a fantastic Troutdale Arts Festival last year. But we learned some lessons and we made some, we did some investigating, taking a look at it. Glen Otto Park is a challenge. It's beautiful and I love the fact that you can wander through the trees while you're looking at art. But it's limited because even with a shuttle service, even with outside help parking, it's hard to hold a major event in Glen Otto Park. So I have been spending, I can't even tell you now how much time talking to city staff and talking to community members about what, how we could make this work better. And also last year, First Friday started really ramping up and was incredibly successful. So we have been talking about having First Friday on Friday, then having the Troutdale Arts Festival on Saturday, having a major community concert on Saturday night, and then having the Troutdale Arts Festival on Sunday, which will just be able to bring more people into Troutdale, to support businesses, to support the community. And to do that, we're going to move up into downtown Troutdale on Columbia River Highway. So this is going to be a lot of fun. It's going to be a great community builder. There are, again, there's always challenges with that, but we have spent some time now figuring out how to have special parking for businesses so that they're not impacted, so they're impacted in a positive way, not a negative way, and really talking that through. So we're excited. The festival will be June 2nd and 3rd. Wait. Now see, now I'm wondering, it's Friday. So Friday would be First Friday, the first Friday of June, and the next two days would be the Troutdale Arts Festival. And plans are moving forward now. I'm excited to be able to kind of give you that update and I'm always interested in, in feedback on that and other ideas. But also, we would like to ask that the city come in with us as a partner and we're asking for a $10,000 sponsor contribution from the city, which is significantly less, fortunately, than 2019, but the pandemic was not a threat to festivals.
So, quick question. So why is it less? Because everything in the world has gone up. So talk to us as to why it's less this time around than it was back in 2020.
Well, in, in 20, yeah, 2019, 2020, it's all kind of blends together. We, the nonprofit was just getting started and they didn't have any backing whatsoever. So they came to you to really help get this moving. And the, we did, even through the pandemic, we managed to make money last year at the, at the Troutdale Arts Festival. We ended up with money in the bank. Now I will say, I'm going to be out pounding the pavement right now, trying to get other sponsors to join in on that because we can't do it with just $10,000. We're going to be out looking for sponsorship. One of the other things that the foundation has, or the association has been doing is looking at other arts organizations in East County and we have been having conversations. I work with a number of arts organizations and we're looking at pulling an alliance together so that we can work and build arts organizations in East County that will support the art, support culture, and that will give us opportunities to go for, for grants and other things. So we're, we're looking at all the options. Now, if you would like to go, if you have the availability and would like to go more than 10,000, I would love that. But we're trying to be respectful and put on a solid festival that really helps the community. And we know dollars are tight everywhere. But again, I'm always happy to accept more.
We have comments or questions from Council, Council Whitman?
When you had the festival down at Glen Otto, do you know approximately what your head count was that went through there?
It was about 2,000 people. No, it was about 2,000 people each day. So 2,000 the first day, 1,500 the second day.
So 3,500 roughly total?
Yeah.
Okay.
And weather did play a factor. I think, I think that would have been a much larger number. I've been involved in every one of them and I think it's one of the, it's one of my favorite events and I like the fact that it's a multi-day event because the idea is to help the hoteliers that pay the transient lodging tax by filling rooms for them. So it's, I think it's an important part, partnership. And I'm just curious how you're going to do it in downtown. Are you talking about using the street?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Similar to the way First Friday has set up. We've worked it out so First Friday could set up, run their event, and then we'll add in another concert on Friday night for artists and sponsors at Mayor Square. So we'll have, we'll have an activity happening on Friday night after First Friday and then move that out and have security stay there Friday night so that early Saturday morning, we can move the arts festival in. So I've got a security team that, that works with me that is, has been talking to staff to make sure that we have that covered. And then they would do another concert at Mayor Square on Saturday night, just for the general public to come and have a good time. And then security would stay there and then we would open up again on Sunday morning. And then Sunday afternoon, close down and reopen the road.
So how does that, sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off. So how does that work with vendors and booths? Do they pull off the street Saturday night?
No.
The permit is 48 hours, in general, 48 hours?
The, the, I want to say ODOT. It's, it would close on Friday at 3 o'clock, reopen Sunday at 7:00 PM. So it's a three-day-long permit for closing.
I'm wondering too, and one of the problems last year was the food vendors could not keep, they couldn't keep up with the crowd. And I'm wondering, you know, are you going to try to do food vendors or are you going to rely on the existing businesses? Because there are quite a few food establishments and I know they'd love to have that business.
Yes, we have been talking about that. We are going to focus on the downtown businesses to allow them to make money and, and, you know, be able to do that. But many of them are not going to be able to, and they're not going to want people to come in and sit down and have that turnover that quickly. So we will have a few food vendors not in close proximity to the restaurants. So there's no competition. And then also really looking at what, what is missing in downtown Troutdale for food and bring that kind of a food vendor in so that we're not having a, we don't want to compete. We want the businesses. I mean, really, my company spends, we spend our time looking at how to bring community together and how to, how to, you know, make money and make money, make community gatherings for everyone. And I don't want to compete against a, a business that's already there that, I mean, that would be just counterproductive. So yeah, there's, there's some fantastic restaurants and we're, we've been talking to some of them about how can you make something that can be grab, grab and go versus sit down? And, but still keep your sit down because there will be people that want to come in and relax. But maybe a little bit of a mix for the weekend.
Any other comments or questions from council? Council Glance?
Yep, I have a couple of questions. What, why use downtown when there are other locations in Troutdale that don't shut down streets and have a lot more parking?
Like Imagination Station, is that what?
That's one of them, yeah.
We've looked at Imagination Station, but with First Friday already in downtown, it's, it's a nice way to pull things together already there. I think you're going to get more traffic into downtown and the idea would be to bring out-of-town guests into downtown to see what's available there. There isn't a lot at Imagination Station. There's open space, yes, but there's, but that's still missing downtown and the benefits for bringing those tourists into the area.
And the dates, any particular reason that was chosen? I see that's the during Rose Festival and the Starlight Parade.
Well, we did it because it's early enough in the season for artists. Artists are, most of the festivals hit July and August. So that's why the end of May worked for us last year, but the weather at the end of May is even more unpredictable than the beginning of June. So we looked at June and we did take into account Rose Festival, but I'm not, I don't see a lot of traffic from here leaving to go to Rose Festival and for the entire day. I think you can still do Rose Festival if that's what you want to do and do First Friday and the Troutdale Arts Festival. Friday and the Troutdale Arts Festival.
Last question, my cat's trying to chime in there too. Was this done before 2019 as well, and what was attendance like then?
It was, where, I think we're in, I was going to check that earlier, I think we're in our eighth year. Every year in the fall, it was the Fall Festival of the Arts, all years but one, we had at least one rain-out day, which is why after the pandemic, we said, let's try spring, because maybe we have a better chance of not raining out. And that's one of the other issues with Glen Auto Park. Artists are really uncomfortable when the ground is not level when they put their art up, so the roots, and that's the same at Imagination Station. It's, there's, there's more challenges with, with ground there. So we're, we're in, I think, year eight. It's always been right around that number. We actually went up a little bit last year. We've always had about that same attendance, and we're trying to increase that attendance.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I'm going to say, I'm going to say I was in support of this until I realized that you were going to close down Columbia River Highway for two, two days, potentially now three days accompanied by First Fridays. And I know our First Friday already, even though it brings community and it brings people down to our core downtown area and brings people to those businesses, it does hinder some of those businesses. And now, in current, this is only two days, and it's not every weekend in the summer, or every first weekend in the summer, but those two days directly after that is going to be, is going to have a negative impact on many of those businesses that are down there, and particularly many of the food businesses that are down there, just because people do want to come and sit down, because people do want to go in there, because people want to drive up and park and all that. So I'm just going to say that I'm not super stoked about that, that we're shutting down. And you have the right to do, because it's not our road. We have to give the permit, but the county can go ahead and okay all of that, so. But that's where my head's going at right now. But really quick, City Manager Ray Young wanted to chime in and say that.
I'm just going to say, that is a concern by staff, and we are actively now working with businesses. Generally, and Saul is here, he may disagree, but generally, the food businesses on Main Street usually benefit if they're open and catered to them, but there are also a lot of beauticians in town who get a lot of business on Saturdays. So I know we're working on how to make sure that they can get access to those businesses in downtown. The staff does take that issue seriously, and it's working to ameliorate the impacts to still get the benefits.
Yeah, this is going back into Glen, or I'm sorry, into Glen Auto Park.
I appreciate that, and I, and I definitely, I mean, that's something that we've been talking about, which is why we've, you know, taken this long to get to this point, because we have been talking to staff and then talking to local businesses and working out with the salons in particular, that's one of the things that came up on Saturdays. We've talked to some of the salons who are very supportive, some, I haven't heard any, personally haven't heard any strong negatives yet, but I'm sure I will. But we were, we have been talking about blocking parking on the lower levels, so for salons, and then running a shuttle so that people can come back in and out. We have, First Friday's always had the shuttle, and then we were planning on continuing using that same shuttle system so that we could park people and get them into downtown to try and alleviate that impact.
I love bringing people to downtown. I love bringing events to downtown. Underutilized or downtown, I think, in my opinion. Again, it's just where my head's going at right now. Councilor Lance?
Yeah, quick question, where do people park to pick up the shuttles?
We have been talking about the Harvest Church or, and Reynolds High School, and potentially if we needed additional parking, we could use Mount Hood Community College. That one's a little further away, I don't love that. And the undeveloped lot here, is it here behind us, if that hasn't developed?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, right here.
The Home Forward property.
So if that is still not in development stage, we could start here, because that's closest, but then also Harvest Church. McMinimum's does have a concert on Friday night and Saturday night of that weekend. They're back to their double, so we won't be using that, because we don't want to impact traffic and parking over in that area.
Is that a side to ask a comment or have a comment or a question? Councilor one?
Sure. I kind of wanted to piggyback off Merritt Lauer's thought process, and is there, did you, like, discuss different options to maybe closing the road for half-day each day or to have two different sites? So I think I really like the idea of the downtown area being utilized and showing it off, but maybe I just, three days or two and a half days of closing it down is, is a long time of 24/7 closing. Not only does it impact the businesses, but it just impacts the community in general, like, they, they use that as their way to get different places. It really hampers people's ability, and that can be frustrating for people that will not be going to the festival. And so that's something else I keep in mind. Anyways, I was, I like the idea of, I know of the Imagination Station in Columbia Park up there, it's open, there's tons of parking, but then it seems like utilizing the downtown area for like a night concerts, like you were talking about, or a night walk or something would be. I know you already have your plan, but I'm just.
No, I'm, I can, so I, the challenge with that is having the artists being at Imagination Station. So the challenge, the biggest challenge is, once an artist sets up, it takes them a long time to set up their booth for sale. They can't tear down, because that was the first thought, was let them be up during the day, then, then tear down at night, and then open up, set up again in the morning. We won't get any artists. We, I mean, we'll, we, we won't get any artists that will, that will be willing to do that. So in order to keep the artists, if we went to Imagination Station, we could do the festival there, but that's really completely 100% separate than doing a concert in downtown. And I, I mean, we have been talking about a concert series in downtown, completely separate from the Arts Festival, that I love, because I really see utilizing your downtown. And with that, you wouldn't have to close the street. For the Arts Festival, you're going to have to, I mean, if it's going to be in downtown, the street will have to be closed. That's, it's, I don't see a way to make that happen otherwise.
Okay, if we don't have any more comments or questions from Council right now, I'm going to go ahead and open it up to public comments. So public comment is open on this time. Anybody on Zoom wishes to speak, go ahead and unmute yourself and state your name and city residence for the record. Anybody in Council chambers? Okay, I'm going to have, if you don't mind, yeah, just go ahead and take a seat real quick, or you can just scoot over if you want to.
Good afternoon, good night. My name is Saul Pompeo, and I'm the owner of Restaurant Day Pompeo. We hear about it, and we run a sorbi with a business. We already have here the sorbi for 20 business of downtown. The business of downtown is too hard to us to close three days. If we go to close three days and they go to bring her own, the hair salon is not happy because they don't want to have any business. Well, it's like a restaurant, they go to close the street and they go to bring her own food vendors and her own alcohol vendors. That means for three days, we don't go to have enough business. Imagine for, support my business, I need to sell $6,000 every single day. That means in three days, I need to sell $18,000. My profit is only $500 a day. That means $550, $5,500 is expensive. If you take the expensive of the food, it's 30%, that means every single day, even I don't open, they cost me $3,000. I have 20 employees to feed. I have rent, gas, and if we close for three days, it's tremendous. My business, my customers cannot arrive, and I don't know how to do the deliveries, you know, the people comes and pick up their food. Go to the, the people call and ask, can we go to pick their food? How we can do it? I know Free Friday is incredible nice. It's, don't have food vendors, it's only three hours, everybody's happy. Even the hair salon says, okay, okay, it's not too much. What did you think in three days? How we can survive three days? You know, when it's snow, I still give the service, even I lost money. But these people comes in our better season time, when we do business, June, because it's dry, everybody wants to go outside, and they want to take our business. How you feeling about it? If I lost $3,000 for three days, it's $9,000 in my profit for the whole month. If I close three days, if they comes, I need to change, because like you said, the people want to see outside. Okay, I got to put hot dogs outside, I got to sell beer outside, but they got to cost me more, because I need to hire more employees to do the extra job, and I have the single, the same staff inside to the restaurant. That means I don't need to sell $6,000 for survive, I need to sell $7,000 for survive in three days. In Troutdale, especially for the win, we only have six months' business, summertime. How many weekends we have? If we lost one weekend, really it's a lot, because remember, I serve him when it's freezing and when it's snow. I lost money, but it's okay, it's part of my job. Being the server, even I don't make money in the winter. But when is the money comes in the summer, I was to take it, because I need support. It's not only myself, it's many families. Here's some sorbi, and you guys can read this. And thank you very much. We like, and it's many ways to do it. We love to have an art festival in the park. When I started art festival, was in Fall Festival, and the reason the Chambers Commerce promote the Fall Festival is because we want business when it's already slow. But now the Fall Festival they bring when we already busy, it's not for promote the business. Remember Glenn asked, say about the TLT money? It's very clear the TLT money is for make tourism, and tourism means the local business make money. Imagine if you have a, what is the reason you want tourists? Really, they cost money for the city. When one tourist arrive to the city, they go to use the streets and all kind of stuff. That's why you pay a tax for recover. Another part of the money go to promote more tourists comes to Oregon, and another part of the tax is specific for make sure the money comes, go to the business, because you have tourists, and the money doesn't go to the business, what is the reason to do it?
All right, Mr. Pompeo.
Thank you.
Rich Allen, Troutdale. So one thing I'd like Council and Saul to consider is, I think, I think we're missing a very important point here. My wife and I were, were of age where we like to go places and see events, and when we come across a town that is nice, that has amenities that we want to come back to, we do, we go back to that town. And so the benefit of a draw like this goes beyond the initial time of the event. It's how we get people interested in the town coming back in the future. And it's, it's those future visits that help a town to survive. Nobody wants to be the town that's forgotten. So I just want us all to take that into consideration as well. Thank you.
Thanks, Rich. Anybody else? Great, I'm going to close public comment. Do you have any other comments or?
I appreciate all the comments, and they are, they are things that we have been talking about for the last year. I, I do think that this will be a benefit to Troutdale, and I think you will see a significant number of attendees come in if it is in downtown, and you're offering additional opportunities with the concert and the First Friday. So I, I think that it would be a benefit to you with, most definitely, working through those issues. I mean, those are, those are all, everything that was brought up are things that we have been looking at and that we want to solve, because we, as a group, don't want to have a negative impact. That's, I mean, there's no point in doing it if it's a negative impact. So I'm happy to answer any other questions or whatever you need to do. Thank you.
Any other follow-up questions?
I just want to comment real quick that, as I said, I've been involved in every one of the Fall Festival of the Arts, but Shannon, you do, you do have an expertise, and I saw that in the last, then, I think it was way above all the others, so.
Thank you.
Have faith in you.
Thank you.
And I kind of remember, you know, Saul was against closing the street for First Friday initially, but all the businesses just exploded down there with business, and I like what Rich said also, that you gotta, we gotta try new things, you know, it's competition out there, but outweigh all that, my decision.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, so the ask, which we would need.
Just clarify, this, this is just for financial assistance, it doesn't make any bearing on the actual use of the street or anything like that. This is just for financial assistance, that Ms. Chisholm can always go find it, find financial assistance elsewhere.
And she's planning to.
And put the same, use the same street, same timeframe, same everything else. We are making, we are making no bearing on the use of the street, it's just the assistance for the program.
Correct. It's technically an art street.
I think, can I?
Yeah, absolutely.
I think, I, I think that while that might be the case, the importance of having the city involved in the Troutdale Arts Festival is, I mean, we spent a lot of time talking through the name change, and, you know, we, we are hopeful that this is part of your city and part, you know, part of helping Troutdale to the next level. So while that might be the case, I think we would, you know, we would definitely take a look at the whole situation. I'm not going to go against, if everybody is not for it, that's, you know, that's not where we want to be.
Well, if everybody's not for it, you can still get it, so just keep that in mind. So again, the ask is for $10,000 for Troutdale to be a financial partner with the Troutdale Festival of the Arts for the coming year, so it would need a motion and a.
I'll make the motion to. Well, I'll, I'll make the motion to use ten thousand dollars from our community fund for this event.
Do I have a second?
I forget.
I'll second it. Let's take the roll call, sir.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Whitren.
Yes.
Counselor Glance?
No.
Counselor Rittman?
Yes.
Counselor One?
I will say, yeah, yes.
Jim Marlowe?
So, I was going to vote no. And the reasoning why I was going to vote no, which I am voting no for. Because again, I don't, I do support bringing programs to Troutdale. I do support bringing businesses downtown, I do support bringing travelers to downtown, and I do support the event itself. But I just can't support shutting down our downtown for two days. And if it was, again, if it was in Glen Otto, a hundred percent. So now what does that do for us with a three to three vote?
The motion failed.
Oh, it's four two.
Four two.
There's already a house.
I was counting.
Oh, my gosh, I'm so happy. Even though I voted no, because I'm, I'm discounting, oh, my gosh, how stupid. I need to go back to Mount Hood Community College. So.
Thank you.
And the way our city is set up, it's so easy to, what I do is I, I turn by the Troutdale House.
Oh, absolutely, there's a way around it.
Yeah, or you can go up.
Yeah, there's a way around it, and there's a way to tackle any problem.
Maybe we could have some good detour signs and.
Is it okay if I say something?
But I do have things.
Do the best you can to work.
I will absolutely pledge to you that I will do the best. And I have, I have been doing events like this for thirty years. So I have seen most everything. And I will do my best, but I also ask, if you've got ideas, please reach out to me and let's work together so that we make this the best for everyone. Because that's the whole point of this is to make it the best, so.
Yeah, and I think, I think being able to reach out and speak to those businesses that are, that might have arguments that haven't came to you, that obviously not came to us except for one, you know.
Right.
It might be a good idea to do a little bit more due diligence, to reach out to them.
Yeah, absolutely.
I think I say, I wanted to say, yeah, that I said yes under the assumption that we will find out like how this did for the city and if it, if it worked. And I think if it doesn't work and it was too much of a hassle and there was too much complaining and it just was, I don't want to say a lot, but just, it just, the flow of it really didn't work. That I'm all for trying new things and trying for something that's going to bring people to our city, and I think that that's exciting. But if it's something that we find that didn't work and it was just too much of a bother, that I would say I would not support redoing it in that location. So which I think would be obvious to, to you, but I just wanted to say that my, my yes vote kind of would, came with that thought process, so.
That makes perfect sense to me.
I echo what Counselor One said, and I'll just add on top of that of, I, what swayed me as well as I thought it would be hypocritical of my vote, if I would say it's okay that the city to do it on Friday and then not support you on the same weekend, so.
Counselor Glance?
Yep, I was concerned not just about shutting down the street, but the fact that we're basically using taxpayer money to compete against Minimans who's having a concert that night. And that brings in a ton of people which are now still then blocked from the road. So it's not like we're just losing a weekend, we're losing a prime weekend for those people to have easy access to some of our businesses.
All right, Counselor.
Say, I, I agree with Counselor One. I voted yes for the, with the same idea that let's see how it works. And if it works, fine, but if it doesn't, let's not do it again.
Okay.
All right.
I'm fine.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you, everybody. All right. Let's move on to agenda item number seven, public hearing and appeal of the Planning Commission's decision for LU dash zero zero two two dash two zero two two application from Kalifa Troutdale. Mr. Alex Lopez, Assistant Plan. Got the call.
Okay, good evening, Mayor, councilors, members of the public. My name is Alex Lopez, I'm Associate Planner for the city. Share my screen here with you all, along with Mr. David Burger.
Thank you. Alex is fighting, what's that?
Director.
Oh, thank you. Alex is fighting a cold, so bear with him.
Okay, so I have a brief presentation for you all, just kind of on the history of this, of this item. It is for a conditional use application for a retail marijuana dispensary located at twenty five six forty three and twenty five six fifty one South East Stark. It's in the shopping center that used to be Albertson's, but now it's Safeway. It's on for general commercial and these type of businesses are listed as a conditional use within the zoning district. Here's just some of the application criteria that we look at for conditional uses, chapters one, two, the overall zoning chapter, as well as section six point three, which goes over the application criteria needed to approve a conditional use. Some background on this, so Planning Commission is the decision-making entity for all type three applications, which is required for conditional use. The Planning Commission held two meetings for this item on November ninth, twenty twenty two, as well as December fourteenth, twenty twenty two. That was at the original meeting in November, the applicant had requested a continuance to the next meeting date in order to provide additional information to the Planning Commission. Planning Commission found that the application did not meet the approval criteria for conditional use. More specifically, it did not meet criteria points A, E, and F, which I will go over. So criteria, criteria point A is that the use is listed as a conditional use in the underlying district or approved by the Planning Commission as similar to conditional uses listed in the underlying district. Through their findings, the Planning Commission found through their interpretation of OLCC and ORS statutes, that Mount Hood Community College qualified as a secondary school and was located closer than the one thousand feet minimum distance required for a marijuana facility from a school. Planning Commission determined that Mount Hood Community College qualified as the secondary school due to several students from local high schools attending Mount Hood Community College for credit. Therefore, this criterion point was not met. Criterion point E states that the proposed use as condition will not cause or result in creation of a public nuisance, including but not limited to air and water degradation, noise, glare, heat, vibration, or other impacts that may be injurious to public health, safety, and welfare. The Planning Commission found that there are significant concerns over safety, not only for the employees of the facility, but for the patrons of that business and other businesses located near that facility. Public testimony at both of the Planning Commission meetings expressed similar concerns as well. Planning Commission found that there are significant concerns and a history of increases in violent crime related to the proposed use. Therefore, the impacts may be injurious to the public health, safety, and welfare. And criterion point F states that the proposal satisfies the applicable provisions of this code. And this criterion point is not met due to criterion point, points A and E not being met. It's kind of a catchall for conditional uses. So this proposal does not satisfy the appropriate criterion needed to, to approve a conditional use application. The application did meet the other criteria points, but because it needs to meet all six in order to be approved, therefore, the Planning Commission voted denial of this item at their meeting. And that is the end of my presentation for you all.
Derek Burger, do you have anything to add?
Do not.
Before we start the public hearing? Okay. So this is a public hearing, so I'm going to go ahead and begin the public hearing process. Tonight, we're holding a public hearing regarding application number LU zero zero two two dash two zero two two, a de novo hearing for the appeal of the Planning Commission decision denying an application for a conditional use permit to allow a retail recreational marijuana store at two five six forty three and two five six fifty one Stark Street. The decision of the Planning Commission was appealed by the applicant, John Widmer, WSW. This is a quasi judicial state. Unlike in legislative hearings where personal opinion may come into play, quasi judicial rulings must be grounded in the relevant code, and if the application meets the code, the council must approve it. The hearing will proceed as follows. After the preliminary legal matter, staff will make a presentation of the history of the application and appeal, followed by applicant's arguments, next followed by the Planning Commission Chair's statement and recommendation, and then the council with your public testimony. Finally, there will be time for factual rebuttal by the appellant, applicant, staff, and the Planning Commission Chair if they so desire. After that, appellant and Planning Commission Chair will each have three minutes for closing arguments and three minutes for rebuttal arguments, with appellant applicant having the last word if the Planning Commission Chair offers rebuttal of up to one minute. Council members may ask questions of the appellant, applicant, staff, or anyone else who testifies during the time they provide their comments, but not during the closing arguments. If any person signed up to speak during the public comment portion of this hearing, please wait to be recognized by the council before speaking or recall during, during the process, but not during the closing arguments. When it is your turn, please state your name and city of residence for the record so that the information can be entered into the minutes. Speakers will be limited to three minutes per comment. The appeal is a de novo hearing, which means new facts or evidence may be submitted. All evidence presented to the lower approval authority is in the record and shall be considered and given equal weight as evidence presented on this appeal. I now call to order the public hearing and ask the city attorney to cover the preliminary legal matters. Mr. Edron?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me run my notes here to speak on it. Got too many, too much preparation here. The criteria that must be addressed in this hearing are community development codes, TDC six point three twenty, conditional uses, three point three twelve, general commercial zone, chapters one and chapters two, introductory and the procedures for decision-making. In addition, the council needs to be aware of ORS chap, chapters four seventy five C, section two forty nine, which talks about the preemption of city regulation of marijuana retail stores, such as this one, among other things. Because the city council is sitting quasi judicially, any testimony, argument, or evidence that speakers may give the council must be directed at these criteria or some other criteria in the code, comprehensive plan, or law that the speaker believes should apply to the decision. If a speaker's testimony would be repetitious, we ask that you take the opportunity to appeal the dis, if you take the opportunity to, to appeal the decision, you must complete a speaker sign up form, which is to sign the, the sign in sheet to speak before the hearing ends. Only those people who have appeared before the city council in person or in writing will have standing to appeal this item to Land Use Board of Appeals. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence that are sufficient to allow the council and parties an opportunity to respond to the issues precludes a piece of, piece of, piece of issue. So in other words, you have to be somewhat clear in what you're saying if you want to raise an issue. Failure to raise constitutional, statutory, or other issues relating to the decision and any proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the city or its designated respond to the issue may also preclude an appeal to Luba, Luba, or an action in the circuit court where that is appropriate. Conflicts of interest. Ask if any members of the council wish to declare any potential or actual conflict of interest or bias. I was on Planning Commission during this, so I will abstain from the vote or commentary. Thank you, Counselor Whitren. Ex-party contacts. Do any members of the council wish to report any site visits or ex-party contacts? Challenges to the city council's jurisdiction. Does any member of the audience wish to challenge this jurisdiction of this council to hear this matter? Challenges to the impartiality of any member of council. Does any member of the audience wish to challenge a conflict of interest or impartiality of a member of council or to rebut or ask questions about ex-party disclosures of any member of the council? Seeing none, we turn it back to you, Mr. Glance.
Thank you, Mr. Chirney. We went through the staff recorded presentation already. Thank you to Mr. Lopez and Derek Burger. Are there any clarifying questions of staff before moving on to the appellant's argument from council? Counselor Glance?
I have a question on the impartiality. I listen to all Planning Commission meetings. I don't comment or even go on camera. Does that cause a problem?
The only question is whether you have an open mind to hear the facts as presented and to render a decision at this time based on the facts in the record currently and to be put in the record at this time.
Okay, no, I'm totally open.
Then you're fine.
So no clarifying questions on staff's presentation before we move forward to the appellant's argument? Okay? All right, all right, all right. On to the appellant's argument, you will have fifteen minutes to present. Yeah, we'll go ahead and make room up here. Yeah.
So my name is John Widmer.
Thank you very much, Chen.
I cannot hear, I cannot hear what they said.
If you could hit the button until it turns red and now you're on.
Can you hear us now, counselor?
Yes.
Thank you. If you want to go ahead and reintroduce yourself, and then I'm going to start the timer, so go ahead.
I'm John Widmer, I live in Oregon City.
Logan Lightman, I live in Dundee.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thanks for the time, it's been a long day. So if I'm a little snarky, forgive me, right? This topic has just been dragging on and on for us. And we're in this process well over two years, which is probably a little bit new to you guys. My brother, my wife, and I started the company in twenty thirteen. I'm actually a Gresham resident at one time, I moved here in nineteen seventy seven, and I went to Mount Hood. I was kind of laughing, the, the ten grand we were talking about earlier for the art festival, I'm glad you guys approved that. It's also probably what you spent with your counselor even getting to this point, right? The irony of that. And the frustration, the frustrating part I've had, and Logan's my attorney, is that we were working on a appeal process prior to the zoning inexplicably changed back in June, something I'd been working on for a year and a half. The, Troutdale's one of the few cities that actually has a park buffer, okay? So if this was five blocks to the west in Gresham, it's proved no problem. But because we're in Troutdale, we had the park buffer. The OLC passed a rule two, three years ago that said if there's a physical barrier, that the thousand foot rule kind of goes out of effect as it related to schools. So like, there's like I two oh five, or in this case, a major barrier, we called a wall at the shopping center. But in this case, I was trying to figure out an angle with Logan, well, can we take it to the council, maybe appeal that as a landmark to try to get the park buffer removed? So we've been talking about this for a good year. And then Logan calls me up in June and says, hey, the park buffer is off the GC zone. He says, I don't think we're going to have to try to work on this appeal. So we moved forward with it. The Planning Commission obviously looked at our application and they approved it. And this is where my frustration begins because the rationale. What's that? The planning staff, the planning staff, sorry, the planning staff. And then we met with the Planning Commission, and this is where my frustration started because the arguments being. because the arguments being laid out that Mount Hood Community College of the school is in fact not accurate. And we've gone to the higher levels of the state. We can prove it. I've had two lawyers beside Logan look at this. They've all said this is a home run. They have to approve it because it's properly zoned. So now suddenly the question, why aren't Mount Hood's a secondary school? It's not. It'll be proven that it's not. We can have the OLC approve that too. We've got letters from the OLC stating it's not. At the end of the day, the state agency overrides the city agency, okay? So it's not a school. And then we go back to the qualitative aspect of safety. There's 700 and something dispensaries in the state of Oregon. We do hear a few of them important that have issues. My brother, my wife, and I own 11. Since 2014, we've had one issue. And by the way, it was in Gresham, Orient, of all things. We had a guy show up with a gun, took two jars of weed, and man, that's it. To the extent of issues we've had, our security's probably tripled that, anything else that's even around us. The owner of the complex now has nightly security going on that we're gonna be responsible to pay for if we get in there. The testing restrictions alone on the product is three, four, or five times higher than fruits and vegetables. And we're in such a regulated industry, and we're talking about whether or not this is a safety, you can't even quantify. And that's the frustrating part, is you're pulling an element out of this going, well, we hear there's problems. Man, I listened to the news a month. Remember, I grew up out here. I listened to the news a month, there was a shooting in Troutdale. I didn't automatically sue Troutdale's not safe because it's not accurate. You know, and so it's just, there's just a lot of frustration boiling over because we're, we delayed this so long, it's costing me a lot of money. And if it doesn't get voted in our favor, it's gonna go to Luba. I got three lawyers, look at it, have all said it's gonna pass Luba. Not a problem. We're gonna be back here, and I don't want to have visceral relationship with the city. Doesn't make any sense. This is my people out here. And that's what's so frustrating to me. So I'm hoping you just look at the facts and say, yeah, Mount Hood, we can prove it's not a school. That should be off the table. And the safety, you can't quantify it. So just off of those two rationales alone, this shouldn't even be a topic of discussion. And the Planning Board, when we talked to them, we kept bringing up the concept of marijuana. Measure 91 passed. That's not a topic of conversation. And this is the only spot in Troutdale minus Tetris that would even be allowed to have cannabis based on how the zoning is set up. So it allowed two spots. And the other part is when we moved down your agenda tonight, you talk about whether it allows city limits. Gresham alone, we pay at least $150,000 annually to the city of Gresham for our shop off of Orient Drive. There's real tax money involved here that now the citizens aren't gonna get access to. So the, you guys are good people, and I thank you for your time. I just, I hope you can understand where my frustration is because all's I want is fair, and this should be black and white. And it's not at this point. It's convoluted. It just doesn't have to be. Logan can expand further and, thank you.
Thanks, John. So I did want to follow up on the point that John mentioned about how we believe that this decision, if denied, if you affirm the Planning Commission's denial, will actively harm the citizens. It will take away tax revenue that you get distributions from. Not only if, and I'm not speaking on the later proposed action, but if that were to happen, that's actually taking away tax money. If this is denied, then, as you may know, the tax distributions are based prorata on the number of retail outlets in a particular jurisdiction. If there's only one currently, and you add one more, that is twice the tax revenue. Simple. So foregoing that, again, I think it actively harms citizens. I wanted to mention too, with respect to the Mount Hood Community College and the Planning Commission's finding that it is a secondary school, we heard a presentation from Mount Hood Community College. They never once called themselves a secondary school. They called themselves post-secondary because they are. In their presentation, they said pathways from K-12 to MHCC, recognizing that there is a divide between them. Surely there are some integrated programs. Those are mandated by the state that community colleges offer those programs. But in no way does that make a post-secondary institution into a secondary school. This is all in my written testimony as well, so I'm just gonna hit a few high points of that. But I did want to mention that I have addressed these points in my written testimony. So again, the Planning Commission is attempting to interpret state law. They're attempting to interpret ORS, the OARs. And the Oregon Liquor and Cannabis Commission is the only state agency authorized to determine or to interpret those specific laws and to promulgate administrative rules related to those laws, or to implement those laws, I should say. They've done so. Adopted definitions. They make determinations every single day about whether a proposed retail location is located within 1,000 feet of the school because they are tasked to do that. They are authorized to do that. The city is not authorized to do that. So when, when we receive a, when any applicant receives a language compatibility statement from the local jurisdiction, they take that to OLC. OLC runs through multiple levels of review to determine whether an applicant meets all of the criteria, not just this one, but all of them. So at the point where we're able to go to OLC with an application, OLC will run through their review multiple times even. They run through their initial review with staff. They run through a technical lead review. And I believe they run through a third set of reviews as well. It's not a fly-by-night decision. They have gone through this multiple, multiple times. And I like to think they know what they're doing. Notwithstanding that, and John mentioned this just a moment ago, if the OLC determines that there is a elementary or secondary school located within 1,000 feet, they can still authorize the placement or the location of a retail premises. If OLC determines that there is a physical or geographic barrier that would allow for a placement of a retail location between 500 and 1,000 feet. There's an absolute cutoff at 500 feet, but between 500 and 1,000 feet. That would be relevant to ours. So if the city denies this, they are not only substituting their own judgment for OLCs, the state agencies authorized to do so, but they are also depriving OLC of further ability to make a determination. We cannot go to OLC without a language compatibility statement. We cannot get the language compatibility statement without having the local approval, which does meet all of the criteria for the conditional use approval here. John also mentioned the security issue, and I think he covered that quite well. Nothing's really been quantified. A single press release was entered into the record that, you know, was a letter from the now former chair of the commission, Paul Rosenbaum, to Senator Ron Wyden. Just past week, I believe, or the week before, Chair Rosenbaum stepped down. Marvin Revival has stepped up to be chair now. Not necessarily relevant, but that is why he's the former chair. Anyways, that was a letter just asking for help from the federal government, to be honest. And he was being hyperbolic. He was expressing that there are some issues, and that if the federal government offered some relief, it could help those. I don't think Chair Rosenbaum at the time was trying to say that he believes that cannabis businesses are inherently unsafe. But it seems like that's what the Planning Commission decided, that these businesses were so inherently unsafe that no proposed conditions would alleviate the problem as they foresee it. The relevant code section says the proposed use as condition, implying that there should be some proposed conditions, right? If, if the city believes that certain criteria are not met, then there should be a dialogue about proposed conditions in order to make a conditional use approvable. None have been proposed, none have been discussed. Instead, one, one small mention of safety was enough for the Planning Commission to decide that this use would never be safe.
Can I make one more comment, Logan?
Absolutely. A question to consider is, you know, there's, there's a, a number of our vendors are actually in the industrial park of log growers and processors. And I would ask, go back and look at your record, and what problems do you have with Tetris or any of the processing producers? Just because, and I'd probably say it's not many, just because they're down in that section, I'd argue that it's actually easier to get at them because there's less people down there. Safeway's pretty busy. And one thing I have found, one of the reasons our stars, our stores haven't been targeted is, I think, revenue wise, I think, we're the third largest retailer in the state, is that we're busy. And that's one of the challenges you have. When you try to walk into a dispensary, if there's five, 10 people around, you're not just gonna try to do what you're gonna do at that moment. You're looking for opportunities. And, you know, it's well lit, heavy security, a lot of people around that area. And if you haven't had problems down north of 84, probably gonna be less challenges up by Safeway. That's, I mean, I would let you think through that for a minute and think about that aspect. And I think that would probably come up for you guys. I think it's about two and a half minutes. No, I, I think it's all's I can ask. You guys just look at the zoning and call it for what it is, black and white, and whether they made the right decision or not, and then we'll kind of take it from there. But, you know, hopefully, if you guys walk out of here and say, hey, we're not gonna allow this, we're gonna take it to Luba. I don't want to do that. I don't want to waste the taxpayer's money. I don't want to waste my money in particular. It's gonna take at least six months to a year to even get this thing open. There's a long runway to even be able to do this, and I'm already 18, two months, two years into this. Man, I'm just ready for it to be over. Yeah, it will add jobs to it. We employ 15 to 18 people per shop. It's crazy. Guys' houses will actually add jobs. So anyways, I appreciate your time.
With the remaining time, just mentioned one thing. It is incredibly rare to see a retail shopping center property owner one able to rent to a cannabis business. Often, they're under a mortgage that doesn't allow them to do some other financing, but also willing. And, and that is a very rare opportunity to provide for a good business location. As John said, it's very well lit. There are other businesses. There are so many factors that contribute to a decrease in, in the safety risk of a business. That I, I'm personally, I was excited when he told me that he had this possible retail opportunity because I've never seen one located, you know, almost next door to an anchor store or a shopping center, to be honest.
Why do you think that is?
As I mentioned before, the shopping centers typically have mortgages that don't allow for federally illegal businesses. And they can't, they don't just have a state level mortgage, for example. And then a lot of the shopping center owners are just, you know, larger businesses that they themselves may not want that business there. Here, we have a much friendlier property owner who's been very supportive of this. As John mentioned, he increased security controls even before this business is able to move in just to make sure that everything's gonna run smoothly when it does. You got about, oh, three seconds.
Yeah, well, I'll tell you one thing to think of. I actually gotta pay like three grand a month for that place while we just sit here and do nothing, okay? So that's the other reason I'm like, can we just move this forward?
So do we have any comments or questions for the appellant from council before we move on to the application? If not, we can move on to the next part. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, good.
Just go ahead and have a seat back there. Same amount of time.
And I am, just to be clear, I'm not doing rebuttal to their, I'm stating our position, correct, at this point? Okay, good evening, Mayor Lauer and city councillors. This is Tanny Staffenson, and I'm the Planning Commission Chair for the city of Troutdale. On November 9, 2022, the Planning Commission held a Type III quasi judicial public hearing for case file LU-0022-2022 Khalifa Troutdale Conditional Use Permit. The hearing was conducted as outlined in the Troutdale Development Code in Section 2. After reviewing the application and reading the hearing procedure and asking the members if there were any conflicts of interest, bias, ex parte communication, and there were no challenges, it was determined that the conditions for a Type III quasi judicial de novo hearing had been met. The following hearing procedures outlined in Chapter 2 of the Development Code, and the criteria for decision was, Chapter 1, and that would be the definition, Chapter 2, Procedures for Decision Making, and Section 3.312, which was general commercial, Section 3.6.300, Conditional Use, and Chapter 17, General Provisions. After hearing from city staff, applicant, and public testimony, the applicant requested a continuance at approximately 8:00 PM. The continuance was granted, and the case was set over for date certain to December 14, 2022, as allowed for in Chapter 2 of the Development Code. At the December 14 hearing, Planning Commission meeting, after reviewing the application, reading the hearing procedure, and asking the members if there were any conflicts of interest, bias, ex parte communication, and there being no challenges, it was determined that the conditions for a Type III quasi judicial de novo hearing had been met. And the hearing proceeded following the procedures in the Troutdale Development Code. And after deliberation, the Planning Commission voted 6-0 in denial of the application at that time. The decision was based on testimony and information received from staff, applicant, and public at the hearing. This information caused the criteria in Section, in Chapter 6, Section 3.320A, E, and F not to be met. Information and deliberation entered into the record for support and clarification of this decision. So the first would be using the school definition contained in the Troutdale Development Code. In that definition, which includes colleges, and this was intentionally included in the definition at the time due to the role that Mount Hood plays in this community. There's been a great deal of deliberation so far about what Mount Hood Community College is and isn't. For the record, I want to say there's at least 261 high school students that attend Mount Hood Community College for their classes. This is either in addition to their attendance at their home high school, or in some cases, Mount Hood is the only school that they actually attend daily. There is attendance taken in the classroom, and that information is provided to the sending school. This is compulsory for these students. They are given a letter grade, and that grade is included in their high school GPA, and in some cases, be allowed by some colleges and universities as credit towards their future compulsory requirements. The discussions and documentation included in the record regarding schools and definition was for the Planning Commission to make sure that their interpretation and definition of a school met the test, the OLC has for school definition. Regarding the criteria not being met in Criteria E, the exhibit provided on the OLC's website, this information was provided by Vice Chair Whitton. And I believe it was fairly accessible. And these are safety concerns, and we believe that they are legitimate safety concerns and possibly may or may not increase with the application. And at times, there are ways to condition these. That is, that is a correct statement. And these, at this time, were only elevated because of the current response time issues that we're having with police and emergency services and increased crime that we're having in the city presently. The applicant, the applicant also raised a question regarding conditional use approvals, that their application may impact other approval, approved conditional use applications. Other conditional uses would not apply to this application as any conditions deemed necessary by the Planning Commission, city staff, or other reviewing agencies would be placed on that application only. You don't go back to other applications and apply other conditions after the fact. Sometimes I think we wish we could, but we can't. At the December 14 hearing, the Planning Commission voted 6-0 in favor of denial of the application. Finding of fact and final order for the application were discussed at the December 14 meeting. This decision was based on testimony and information received at the hearing. The Planning Commission found that Mount Hood met the definition requirements not only contained in the Troutdale Development Code, but also included in state definition, OLC definitions for school, and felt that those also were met. At the meeting on December 14, after the meeting on December 14, sorry about that, I wrote the finding of fact, and these findings were reviewed and edited by the city attorney, who was also present at the November and December hearings. The findings of fact were voted on by the commission at their January 11 meeting. And the final order of decision was also voted on and approved by the Planning Commission at their January 11, 2023 meeting. by the Planning Commission at their January 11th, 2023 meeting. Um, how much time do I have?
You have eight and a half minutes.
May I go ahead and rebut? Uh, or do you want to ask questions first?
Let's wait after, after about time of argument is done, then we'll go into rebuttal. So do we have any comments or questions for Planning Commission Chair Staffenson from counsel?
I have one question. So, uh, the appellant mentioned, um, the park buffer.
Yes.
So that's not in the findings by the Planning Commission?
And I'll actually say that the way that we got down this road in the first place was there was some maintenance work done to the Development Code. A table was, a used table was inserted into the code. And, um, that was a piece of code that was left out when that was done. So, yes, it was left out of the code. The Planning Commission never intentionally removed any of that language from the Development Code, nor did they know that it even happened.
Mr. Trump.
So it's, it's unclear, but it appears that that may have been a publication error that when the, when the table was added to the code last June, I, I, you heard it earlier, I believe.
Yes, May.
May, yeah. Uh, that, uh, it was meant to be in addition to the existing code piece, which had in it the 1,000-foot setback from schools under the city's definition. And it appears to have been just not published properly in the, uh, in the city's online code that's, uh, maintained by Unicode Corporation. Uh, and that has, has not been corrected to this point in time. So it, it appears it was an error, but, uh, nobody's made a decision about that because this came up.
Okay. Okay, so counsel, what?
Oh, I have a question. Um, isn't, isn't this sandwiched between Mount Hood Community College and Walt Morrie Middle School?
Basically, it's between the two. It's not a exact straight line.
And neither one of them are, are, are both of them within the 1,000-foot?
Walt Morrie's about 1,100 feet change.
Okay. Got it.
Uh, counsel, written up?
I assume that, uh, and this is for our city attorney, that we are not to consider distance from parks tonight.
If, if you do, it raises the issue of whether the publication error, uh, puts, uh, fails to put the appellant on notice that, uh, it was probably the intention of the city to leave that in. Uh, and we're, we're simply sitting with our hands off of it right now until this works its way through. But it does appear as, uh, com, uh, coun, excuse me, Commissioner Staffenson said that it wasn't the intent of, of the staff to, of the Planning Commission, or as the way it was presented to counsel, to delete the, the text that was deleted. It simply wasn't put in, uh, you know, it wasn't stricken from what my recollection of seeing it was.
So we don't have any documents? We don't have any minutes? We don't have anything from a counsel where it was pulled, where we showed it was pulled?
No, no, we don't have that here.
Okay.
But, uh, the appellant, uh, stated in their statement that they were, they had noticed the change and that parks were no longer part of the whatever could be blocked, could block, uh, the sighting of a, this facility. And they noticed it, they mentioned it, they didn't argue, they're not arguing the point. Um, it seems, I'm, I'm just, I'm asking if we're even allowed to consider the parks issue. I mean,
You can, but it raises an issue that they will argue if they appeal, which, uh, they seem to say they're going to. So it just creates another argument on appeal both ways. And, uh, I couldn't tell you how Luba or any court would decide that.
Okay, I, I guess for just clarification, let's, let's, let's go back and visit the school issue again. Okay, um, you know, the comment was made, there's a few kids that go there. 261 children, because they're under the age of 18, doesn't sound like a few kids. That's a bigger population than some of the high schools in the state of Oregon. And, um, it was also discussed about the measurement. And our interpretation, this has been supported by the city attorney, is that it's measured from property line to property line. And property line to property line, Mount Hood Community College as a school would be inside of that buffer, and they would not qualify. And that, that is what drove us to the decision that we made, was I just don't know how you can have 261 kids going to a school and just say that, for whatever reason, the state or OLCC, whoever says this, because I look at our definition, I look at how we applied those definitions, how you can say that doesn't matter?
About 90, a little more than 90 seconds.
I appreciate you taking the time, um, to review this. It doesn't happen very often. I know it's been at least 10 years since there's one been appealed, and somebody else told me it was closer to 20. So I'm kind of nervous, kind of cold, but yeah. Did you have a question, counsel?
I had one question, because you mentioned the vote was 6-0, but I'm seeing here that it's 4-1. Am I missing something?
It was 6-0 at the hearing.
Okay.
And when the findings were written and presented, um, there were two commissioners absent for that meeting. And one dissent.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
About a minute. If you have nothing further and no other clarifying questions or comments from counsel for Chair Staffenson?
No.
Okay. We're going to move on to, uh, public comment. So public testimony, uh, is open at this time. Uh, go ahead and we'll go to Zoom first. State your name, city of residence for the record, and you will have three minutes to speak on behalf of the proceedings tonight. Let me restart my turn. Go ahead, and again, if you're on Zoom, state your name, oh, state your name and city of residence for the record. Okay, nobody on Zoom? Anybody in council chambers wishes to speak? Now's the time. Go ahead, approach the desk, state your name and city of residence for the record. You have three minutes to speak to that.
Just wait, not 10 seconds.
Uh, wait till you're sitting and after you state your name. Same thing I did for both of you.
Okay, I'll stay really fast. Diane Castillo, Whitechapel, Oregon. Um, I want to speak to compulsory attendance, um, that defines a school. And, let's get there. Okay, first I want to, um, make it known that in Oregon, I believe, so I'm not quoting, don't quote me, so that, um, a student is obligated to attend, uh, to achieve a grade 12 equivalents, um, unless you're, from my reading, um, 16 through 8, 16 and 17, and you have a full-time job. And so students, um, Mount Hood Community Colleges, College offers credit recovery. Students with failing grades in core content subjects required for graduation must take credit recovery. And that's not the limit to what Mount Hood Community College offers. I'm just making that statement. The high school credit recovery program at Mount Hood Community College is a service we provide to current enrolled high school students, grades 9 through 12 in the Portland metropolitan area. Students looking to recover credits from classes, taking at their home high school, can we take those courses through our spring or summer program? We also offer high school level classes in all core subject areas required for the completion of the Oregon diploma and local high school graduation requirements. Our courses are approved by the Oregon Department of Education as original credit courses. So I don't even know how many people do, do that, like, you know, that have to, have to recover and that are enrolled. We've talked about the 261, there may actually be a lot more. And so I am making a statement that this makes it, uh, compulsory, uh, for attendance. When we're speaking about safety and we're saying that, um, it, it's an unknown factor right now for having that, uh, dispensary located at that location, uh, the public did state at the last meeting that, um, that the, the old Albertson's now, now called the Safeway, that many have witnessed, um, uh, lots of theft there. And so they were already stating that there's established within the area of a, uh, of a hi, a high amount of theft at the time. Okay, and let's see what else, huh? Speak really quick, too. sorry, let's see, D. I think that's it for now. That's, that's the, um, the main point I wanted to make tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in council chambers? Give me one second, and we'll restart this clock after you state your name and city of residence for the record.
Uh, my name is Adrian Kester, I'm a Troutdale resident. Um, I am also a former educator, a former high school teacher. Uh, has worked with kids for years. Um, regarding the, uh, health and safety aspect of this, uh, my opinion is that this is no more dangerous than the liquor store that is a few blocks down the street. In fact, in, under most circumstances, it is far less dangerous simply because of the rules and security that, uh, OLCC and the state forces to go on these establishments. Do I think that cannabis is a problem for teenagers and children in this state? Yes. Is this going to change that, whether we, uh, have it or not? Not in the least. Uh, I also want to address the, uh, consideration of Mount Hood Community College as a secondary institution. From my experience, having worked in programs with both, not this one, but with both community colleges and high schools, Mount Hood Community College offers services to high school students. It is not a secondary institution. Uh, it, it provides those services, it works with secondary institutions, but it is in itself not a secondary school. Thank you.
There's no more members of the public in council chambers. I'm gonna go ahead and close public comment. And now we have, uh, Mr. Staffenson, come back up for rebuttal. And we'll have three minutes.
I'm rebutting public comment.
Uh, you're rebutting, uh, I believe anything that you want. Yes. Well, relevant to the matter again. And then name and position.
Uh, Tanny Staffenson, Planning Commission Chair. Uh, I guess one of the things that we keep coming down to is what is a school? And what is the definition of a school? And, um, I can only tell you what Mount Hood told me, and I include in the record the list of schools that are included in that program. And I know from personal experience, not me, my children went there. And for them at that time, it was no different than any other school. They went there, they got grades. It was the same as them going to Corbin. And, um, I look at the technical definitions and I see the same thing, and I'm trying to really figure out how we, we get to this place where it's not really a school. So are they not really learning when they're there? I don't know. Seems to me like it's really no different in a lot of ways than a high school campus. And, um, one of the things that was intentionally done with this legislation when it passed was it was not going to be near schools. And yet we try to find ways to put it near schools. I mean, you know, people have also commented, do we have to have it next to the only grocery store in the city of Troutdale? And that's not a criteria for the Planning Commission to consider. We don't work off of that. Now, you stand, I, I stand with our definition of school. And I just don't think I'd be honoring the students that are there if I don't.
Mr. Trump.
Excuse me. Yes, Commission Chair Staffenson asked me earlier to, uh, get copies of the relevant statutes. And that's what this is. I'll give one to the applicant here. I, I think it was, this was distributed also in Planning Commission.
Yes, and the Planning Commission deliberated these facts. And one is the OLCC, and I believe the other one is what the state definition as well. Yeah, yeah.
I think so. Are our two counselors on, do they have?
Uh, it's in the record as, oh, boy.
J, I think is one.
What you got about 20 seconds?
All right, I'm working a little slow.
Yeah, none of these are numbered, that's a problem, too.
I don't know exactly which documents.
It's in the record, um, begin, just before Exhibit C.
J is one.
Right, Mr. Staffenson.
Okay. Thank you.
Busy, don't wish to respond. And we will have the same three minutes. You can, wait, say it again, just state your name again.
John Widmer, yeah, Oregon City.
Logan Leichman, Gundy.
Yeah, I'll, I'll leave you with one thought. I'd be, we're arguing about whether or not it's a school or not. It's not even our jurisdiction to make that decision. It's been decided by the LLC, it's not a school. If we get the Lux, we gotta go to the OLCC. They have to determine whether it's a school or not. It's happened once before where a city gave us a Lux. We went to spend a half a million dollars to open Oregon City up, called the OLCC to come inspect it. They said, there's a school to the 1,000 feet. We said, where is it? They showed us where it was. The city didn't even know it existed. It was an at-home, like, study center. It went all the way up to the Attorney General of Oregon, who said, no, that's not a school, and they ruled in our favor. We backed it, built a building out, and the OLCC said, no, we're not gonna give you license. So we're arguing about something that's really irrelevant. The OLCC will have the final say in regards to whether or not it should be a high school or a middle school. 1.5% is the number of students that are under 18 that go there. Per the numbers that were reported here by the Planning Commission and Mount Hood Community College. It's a very, very small percentage of students. And I'm not here to morally say whether that's right or wrong. I can only report it with black and white. It's not a school. And the OLCC gave us an email stating it's not a school. We gave it to the Planning Commission, said it's not a school. I don't understand why this argument's existing, and it won't be your decision to make it or mine. It will come down to the OLCC.
So yes, I, I did want to mention, um, Chair Staffenson just mentioned, um, he just stated, we keep coming down to what is a school. John just mentioned that as well, and I did in my earlier testimony. We shouldn't be coming down to what is a school. The city is not tasked with defining what is a school. It is notable here that, um, uh, I, whether or not the, the timeline and the code publication, um, actually what happened was, um, I was asked to look at it after June, after the readoption of the code. I had never looked at the Troutdale Development Code before that. I looked, I analyzed the code, I found no parks buffer. John said, wow, there was a parks buffer in there before. I said, well, let me look again. No, there isn't one. So when an applicant goes to review code and they don't find relevant language in there, the applicant can only go by what is actually there. That is why we have a fixable post rule in Oregon. It's very important to land this law. Without it, Without it, cities could do whatever they want, just change the rules on us, which they would do if it weren't for that rule. So whether or not it was a publication error, it was not in the code. Also, what was not in the code was any specific restriction from the city about location from the school. So the city's definition of a school is not relevant, or particularly a secondary school. Thank you. Also, the measurement is not property line to property line, the measurement as provided by the state is the property lines of the school, if it was a school, to the closest point of the premises of the Great Tenet. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to do a little clarification, and for that, I believe it would be fair to give the appellate's attorney a little time to respond.
Okay.
Okay. Based on what you've got here, remember that this is a conditional use permit. The city can attach conditions to it, including conditions like a thousand feet from the school, right? And the city's definition of a school is important to that. You do get to define what that is because there's preemption of certain matters of regulation by the OLCC. The courts have been less than clear yet about defining what that is, but the courts, the statutes also state expressly that the cities do have reasonable time, place, and manner regulation authority. To say it better, you have authority to impose reasonable time, place, and manner restrictions on the operation of a recreational retail store or marijuana. And if you, if, as Planning Commission is doing, and probably could be written in this way, is that a condition can be that it must be located a thousand feet from a school. And in terms of defining what a school is and interpreting a statute, OLCC will have a say in it, but the courts will make the final decision, not OLCC. And OLCC did define it, it's right on this sheet of paper, it says a secondary school means a learning institution containing any combination of grades nine through 12 and includes junior high schools that have a ninth grade. When I read this, I read that to mean a learning institution includes almost, you know, PCC, Mount Hood Community College, Clackamas Community College, they're all learning institutions, so is U of O, that contains a combination of grades nine through 12. Well, Chair Stephenson has brought in some evidence, and there was evidence below, that there are students there in those grades, and then it goes on to conclude that it includes junior high schools. So it isn't restricted to just second, what we would consider high schools, secondary high schools. It includes something other than a high school. Does that mean, that's on the lower end? The question then comes, is it reasonable to include that within the other end, the higher end, as long as there are students? And in the other, the OLCC statute, it defines what a student is in this, is it focuses upon compulsory attendance. Compulsory attendance is, as Counselor White's spouses came and said, was, is compulsory attendance means that it is attended by a child between the ages of, and this is the statute, child between the ages of six and 18 years who has not completed the 12th grade and is, and so their guardian or parent is required to send the child to and maintain them in a public full-time school during the entire school term unless they attend a private school that's equivalent, and that's the other piece of that statute. So I can't say it doesn't fall in that statute. The statutes are broad enough, and the OLCC rule is broad enough to include Mount Hood Community College. Whether or not you think it does falls on you, and you have that decision-making authority to determine in the first instance whether or not that's right. Later or not later on, other authorities get to say you're right or wrong, but in the first instance, you do get to make the decision. So you have to use your best judgments in this, but I can't say that it's excluded.
Okay. All right. So I'll give each of you an opportunity to rebut. We'll go.
And as I said, to go back to my first point, was this is, you can impose conditions, including that it'd be a thousand feet from whatever you want, if that's a reasonable time, place, and manner restriction. And again, that's your discretion to make that decision in the first instance.
Okay. All right. We'll go with, we'll go with the same amount of time.
I'll go first. I mean, the OLC's defined this, sorry, John Widmer. And I just, I pay a lot of lawyer bills, as you can imagine, and we operate in the gray with lawyers. Yes, you can win, no, you couldn't win, this has been defined. And I went through it once before, and it's not, it should, the OLCC or however we get our license would ultimately determine that. And if we go to Luba, they're going to stick to the facts, they're going to go to OLCC, they're going to say it's not a school, so Troutdale's, or it's not a school, Trout is going to be forced to fight this, and I'm wasting money, you're wasting money, I just, I've had three lawyers look at it, that's the part I'm just like, we keep arguing back and forth, we're at the school or not, it's a null argument, I'm sorry, it's null.
Go ahead.
So I did want to address the imposition of reasonable time, place, and manner regulations. In my experience, and I have to go and review, but those are typically adopted by ordinance and not ad hoc by a counsel in a quasi-judicial hearing. It is not reasonable to impose a condition that used to be in the code newly in a quasi-judicial, quasi-judicial hearing. The definition from the OLCC of the secondary schools mentioned, and I'd like to point out that in that language, it doesn't say a combination of students, it says a combination of grades. Grades being a specific term that means more than just classes. Some classes are not grades. A student cannot go ninth, 10, 11th, 12th grade and matriculate with a high school diploma from that institution. It is not a secondary school for that purposes.
Can I make one more comment? Our shop in Ashland, it's on the campus of Southern Oregon. This is already defined, it's right across the street, it's the entrance to Southern Oregon.
Southern Oregon Community College has a.
I guarantee that Clackamas, I've looked at these maps, the community colleges are not schools. They're not. As a matter of fact, our Woodstock shop's across the street from a Chinese immersion that used to be, it's on 52nd and Woodstock, I forget the school. And when we applied, they said Chinese immersion, there's kindergartens, first years, doesn't count. I mean, there's just, everything can be as gray as we want it to be. The planners looked at it and said, yeah, this is approved. They just looked at the facts. And the Planning Commission decides to take more than just the facts and expand on it. That's my frustration. I just want what's fair. So I'm done talking. I'm sorry if I get a little agitated, it's a long, long, two-year road for me.
To add to that, Rogue Community College in Medford, I believe, has four retailers just scattered around its campus directly across the street.
All right. Thank you. Chair Stephenson. Save him a minute. How long? Three. Three minutes?
I might take it all this much. Good evening, Mayor Lauer and Councillors, Tanny Stephenson, Trouto Planning Commission Chair, here with you this evening. Okay, a couple of things. First off, I sincerely apologize if we're wasting people's time. It's never been our intention, and the Planning Commission first saw this application in November of 2022. So if this has been a two-year ride, it has not been that the team that you've put in response of handling these issues for the city has put us in that position. So I apologize for that. Okay. The definition that we have for a school, a public parochial or private institution that provides educational instruction to its students, including accredited colleges or universities, this definition does not include trade or business schools. And I know we go back and forth on this, and I guess the first question is, there are things that we regulate at the level, we don't kick all these things up to somebody else to have them decide what goes where. That's why we have a development code. So if we're just relaying all this to the OLCC, why is there a conditional use? Why is there even an application? So I guess that's kind of new. And again, I'm real sensitive about the school thing, and I apologize for that, but if it's such a small percentage, and if they can't get a direct high school diploma there, or whatever reason we want to find to make this work out the way we want it to, who's going to tell the parents? Because I'm responsible to the development code, and I'm also responsible to the people's Do you have any questions with me? You guys are awfully quiet.
We've got one quick question. How close is that location to Canary Park? I know parks can't be counted, but would that, if that mistake hadn't occurred, would that have been enough to stop this application?
I believe so. You don't know for sure. Okay. Yeah. And that probably answers your question. But again, we never authorized, and that's a separate issue, we never authorized that language to be removed from the code. And if you go back and look at the meetings when those hearings were handled, that was never a discussion point.
All right, Mr. Stephenson. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
Mr. Trunkie, that's the end of the rebuttals, and we'll finish through this procedure before we open up to comments and questions for staff from the council, addressing requests or continuances.
Right. Section 11, thank you. Ask the applicant or anyone who has appeared if you wish to request a continuance, or do you want to move directly to decision at this time? You do, you always have the option.
This, you know, we don't usually die open for comments on the.
Okay. So there is no request for a continuance, goes to option two, so we can close the public hearing and either leave the record open or not. That is your option. They have not requested it, so that would make sense to close the hearing.
Okay. So based on that recommendation and the response from the opponent, we go ahead and close the public hearing. Public hearing is now closed. So now we need to make a motion to close the public testimony portion of the hearing?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So would someone like to make a motion to close the public testimony portion of this hearing?
Yes, I'll make a motion to close the public testimony hearing.
Open hearing.
Second.
So everybody, Councilor White. Let's go, let's go roll call.
Councilor White.
Yes.
Councilor Ripley.
Upstain.
Councilor Lance.
Yes.
Councilor Ripley.
Yes.
Councilor Blaine.
Yes.
Mayor Lauer.
Yes. Okay. Public testimony portion is closed. So we are going to move on to questions of staff. Does the staff have any further comments or questions or clarification regarding this view?
I think staff looks good.
Does any member of council have any questions for staff or the appellant at this time? Councilor White? Oh, sorry, Sandy, I'll go with Councilor White first.
Yeah, I have a point of order question for Ed Trunkie regarding Jordan's situation. Is there a reason he cannot vote tonight?
He participated in the decision below, so he shouldn't participate in the decision tonight.
Okay.
Unless he wants to overturn and change his mind. No. No. It's. And I'm not allowed to comment either, correct? Right. In a quasi-judicial setting, that's the appropriate thing, is the person who participated below not to participate.
I think this is the first appeal. I've been on four terms, and we have not had an appeal.
We spoke about this, and the only person in the room who was here is Sarah. And when was it?
2005.
2005 was the last appeal.
So something for our planning department.
Yeah.
Are you good? Councilor Lance.
Yeah, I just wanted to kind of go over what it is we are allowed to make the decision based on.
You're allowed to make the decision based on the approval criteria and any statutes that govern that. Mostly, the statutes limit your discretion in the approval criteria. You can impose any conditions, because it is a conditional use, that are reasonable time, place, or manner conditions. That, in a nutshell, is it. I'm sure there's more to it than that, but yeah, that's the Cliff Notes version.
Perfect, thank you.
Councilor White.
So I heard that the language about a park being within that thousand feet, apparently mid, like, just magically walked away from the code, is that back in the code if I were to go apply for this right now?
And. We have, my staff hasn't made a decision on how to deal with that. The cleanest way to deal with it is to readopt and say that it was omitted in error.
Yeah. In which case does it, so what I'm asking is, does that not apply to this situation right now if you were to readopt it? Or is it whatever, when they applied for it, whatever was there, if it was, I guess, is that my question? But if it was accidentally omitted, then it really was there?
Then they'll argue about it on appeal, and we'll argue back.
Okay.
What's interesting, Ed and I have been talking over here, is the code that was approved by the Planning Commission and the council says that marijuana facilities are a conditional use. Just the whole section that says what those conditions are was left out of commercial. It is in slave industrial, regular industrial, but what would have been the duplicate language just was left out of that at all. But it does say it's conditional, it just doesn't say what the conditions are. That's, so there was obviously a omission, but you have to figure out what that omission was. But the reason that school is still in play and not parks, because school and parks were left out of the code, is that under the state law, schools still apply even if our code doesn't. That's why we're still talking schools, not parks.
But in every other zone, that park language is there.
Yes.
Yes.
And I think there was testimony that the appellant was aware that it was there earlier, and then they noticed it was gone, and so they came in and said, hey, we can do this. Okay. That's what happened, is somebody else, somebody else noticed it, not.
And that's kind of the reason that we're talking about this right now.
Yeah.
Any other comments from council or staff or the appellant?
Quick question. Does staff, does staff have a definition of what a secondary school? No?
No.
You don't have, okay.
However, there was a definition in one of the other, you know, just a school, not a secondary school.
Right, yeah.
But in interpreting the city's definition, you are limited by the OLCC statute, which says that schools are, what, age six to 18, haven't completed grade 12, so they're under a mandatory compulsion to attend class. so they're under a mandatory compulsion to attend classes someplace. And that, where the place is they're under a mandatory compulsion to attend is a school. That's what that statute seems to say.
We're allowed to ask you questions, like about, I just
And I'm likely to try to read you the statute back, but go ahead.
No, I
Can I ask you a question now?
Go ahead. Someone else.
The mayor is in charge of the meeting.
No, but I don't know if I'm allowed to ask a question.
I don't think you are.
Kind of think about how to formulate my question. You said something that mandatory attendance. And do, this is more speculative, I guess. I guess, do people, like, do these high school students don't have to go to Mount Hood Community College? Are they doing this on their, if they're doing this on their own to better, further, or deserve? You might get a gist of what I'm saying, so.
There's a page in the record from the website of the Mount Hood Community College, which says that they offer classes to high school students who want to take the classes, and they're either not available, or they may be available, but they're more convenient or something. I'm looking for that page.
Is that like number nine?
Yes, yes, that's it. It should be policy of the community college. And this is a statute 391, 341009, sub nine. Should be the policy of the community college to open its facilities, make available its resources to high schools in the area on a sound contractual basis for appropriate secondary or traditional courses. So it does include secondary school courses, either academic or as part of a career in technical education when it's within its ability to provide facilities and is determined that the high school cannot or does not offer them. So that is what I believe in the emails between Trunkie, Staffenson, and the people at the community college. They said they were all offering high school classes.
So if I go to a high school and I want to take a shop class, and they don't offer the shop class there, but I can go get that at the community college, and it would be, it would be part of my high school education at that point.
It's considered high school education. It may also be a college-level class. You may get dual credit for it.
Yeah.
Just like kids can take in the high school AP classes and get dual credit for it. Same sort of thing.
I believe there is a group of students that are mandated to go to Mount Hood for, they have special circumstances that make it difficult for them to be part of the general population at Reynolds. But I can also say as a, you know, parent, that my kids went all the way from Trudell Elementary, Waltmorey, Reynolds, and then on to Mount Hood Community Colleges, that it's hard to separate Reynolds High School from Mount Hood, because they do the football games there, they do their band, their orchestra, their plays, water polo, they use the swimming pool for swim team. There is no, none of those facilities exist at Reynolds. So I think there are just a lot of, it's a very unique situation.
Any other comments or deliberations from council moving forward? So let me just restate the purpose of this meeting. So this public hearing and appeal is to come to one of two decisions, to either uphold the planning commission's decision or overturn the planning commission's decision. So we've gone through testimony, we've gone through public statement, we've gone through rebuttals, we've gone through comments with staff, and now we're deliberating amongst councillors as to prior to making a motion for one of the three decisions. So this is, this is getting down to it. So if you have anything left to discuss right now, it'd be the time.
I have another question for Ed.
Councilor White.
Is there, what are, we're going off a state, since this was not included in our Trudell state code.
It's not, it's not included in the public.
Okay. And so this is a, like, state rule that we're trying to decide of the school issue?
Yes and no. You can either impose a condition of approval that it be required to be a thousand feet away, or you can say that we're not going to approve it because we don't think it complies with the state law.
Okay. Is there any other, in the state of Oregon, are there marijuana dispensaries near community colleges or within a thousand foot of, a thousand feet of a community college that you have found?
I haven't, but I haven't looked. I think the appellant said there are some, but I have not looked. And the other issue, the other question on that is, is laws are not, are often not interpreted until the question comes up.
Sure.
Decisions are made.
Yeah.
And in this, at this, a staff level, you know, over the counter person said, said to them, yeah, well, I think it's fine, I don't think it's a community college. You have, you have facts here that are not the fact she was relying on. The fact she was relying on were there are kids taking college-level classes. And the facts that have been put in front of you here are kids are taking high school-level classes as well as college-level classes there.
Yeah.
So it's different. So
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Ripma.
The fact that some other cities in Oregon might choose to not condition locating a facility like this because of the presence of a community college is, that city's, we don't know what decision. They're allowed, under the OLCC rules, to make that a condition. We are allowed to make that a condition. Other cities might elect not to do it. That doesn't mean that we're wrong. I also think that Ed Trunkie, our city attorney's December 8th email, which is in the record, has the bold point, as far as I'm concerned, and I'll just quote, "It may well be that OLCC will define high school students attending MHCC as not attending a secondary or elementary school. But OLCC needs to do it officially, not in an email. After public notice and comment, so making process, OLCC must engage in statutory interpretation, not discretionary rulemaking. And courts will ultimately, courts will ultimately have the final say, for better or worse, what the legislative assembly meant." So I think the planning commission acted well within the discretion they have under this, these rules and laws and under our development code at the time they rendered their decision. And I, having heard arguments on both sides, I'm persuaded that the planning commission was correct.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Ripma. Any other comments or deliberations? Okay, so again, the purpose of this meeting, this public hearing, was to hear the appeal from the appellant, and we have done so. So right now, I would entertain a motion to, one, either uphold the planning commission's denial decision under their file number LU-0022-2022, and uphold the planning commission's denial of a conditional use permit to locate a recreational, a recreational retail marijuana store in the general commercial zone 25643 and 25651 Southeast Stark, and direct staff to bring back findings for adoption on the next March meeting. Or a motion to move to make a tentative decision to approve the appeal of LU-0022-2022 to overturn the decision of the planning commission denial and allow a conditional use permit to locate a recreational marijuana store in the general commercial zone 25643 or 25651 Southeast Stark, and direct staff to bring back findings for adoption on the next March council meeting. Councilor Ripma.
Well, I move to approve the planning commission's decision denying in the matter, approve the planning commission's denial in the matter LU-0022-2022. And further that we adopt, the city council adopted the findings made in that decision, which I think were sound.
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilor Glantz. Okay, any other comments or deliberation from council? All right, roll call, please.
I have a question.
Oh, yes.
I just had a question, procedural question. Should I ask for a vote from Councilor Whitman or not?
I don't know that it matters, he can just merely
If I did it wrong last time or not. All right, I'll just do what I did last time then. Councilor White?
Yes.
Councilor Whitman?
Abstain.
Councilor Glantz?
Yes.
Councilor Ripma?
Yes.
Councilor One?
Yes.
Mayor Lauer?
Yes.
Okay. Passes. So we would like to thank all who came and testified. Your comments have been very helpful. I don't need to inform you of the next procedure or the next step, but if you'd like to appeal this decision, you must appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals and Courts of Louise Rules and any applicable provisions in the Trudell code. Thank you very much. The hearing is now closed. All right. Thank you, gentlemen. We're going to move on to agenda item 8.1. Public hearing. Introduction of an ordinance and adoption. An ordinance approving ban on additional recreational marijuana retailers and referring the ordinance to the electors of the city while also declaring an emergency. Mr. Ed Trunkie, City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me grab my materials. As you know, the OLCC and the legislature have preempted most regulation of marijuana at at the recreational levels. There are different rules for the dispensaries and all that are medical marijuana, but the ordinance before you was suggested to be presented to you in order to let the city recognize the rights that it has given to existing retail, it's a hard phrase to say. Yeah, retail recreational marijuana stores and outlets, and that they be allowed to continue in business in their current locations as long as they remain licensed in those locations by the OLCC. And that means they're going to have to obey the rules. This would merely do, the statutes allow cities to outlaw or prohibit from any date forward, any new or, any new recreational marijuana producers, retailers, wholesalers, or or processors, the four kinds that they have, and to put that to the voters. The effect is, is it goes into effect immediately, immediately, or 30 days after. In this case, there's an emergency clause, so it would go into effect immediately. And it would be then referred to the voters, who the statutes require the voters get a shot at approving or denying it, dismissing it. And that date is the November general election. It requires the statewide general election, which is in November of an even numbered year. That'd be a year and a half from now in November. And in the meantime, the city recorder is required to, city elections officer, I think, is required to send a notice of the text to the OLCC, and the OLCC then stops licensing any new, any licensees who would be prohibited by that ordinance. In this case, that would be any new licensees who are desiring to come into the city, but would not prohibit the existing ones from maintaining their licensing and businesses as usual. That's it in a nutshell. It can be done, we have it on two lines here. It's with a, with an emergency clause, which requires unanimous consent. If it doesn't get unanimous consent, then we simply do this again and have this as a first reading, and then it just requires a majority vote. That's the way it was suggested that we bring up to you.
Okay, so, sorry, really quick. Introduction and adoption of of this ordinance and declaring an emergency, does that, you might have said this, it creates a moratorium from here until the 2024 November.
Your passage doesn't, but delivery of it by, to OLCC, by the city elections officer does.
And as soon as
Creates the moratorium.
And as soon, if 8.1 creates a if we vote it, if we pass it, and then city recorder, election officer, it, once she creates that, sends that off, and it's received, we receive confirmation from that date of confirmation, it creates a moratorium.
It actually would go into effect in the city, but OLCC would stop licensing new places as soon as they get the notice.
Okay.
Delivery by email, I presume. I haven't looked at the process. I'll leave that to Sarah.
Okay.
I haven't seen it either, but I can, with other things, I've done both, sent it by mail.
I'll show you the statue.
Okay. Questions and comments from council? Councilor Glantz?
I have a question. Didn't we base some mushroom usage or something? That was based on, we just copied all the marijuana laws?
No, we have not yet. What we had discussion last year on was the statute for the mushroom facilities require the city to do one of three things. One, do nothing, and it could be placed wherever your current zoning allowed for it. Two, you could place restrictions on in terms of time, place, and manner. Three, you could refer to the voters a ballot measure that would ban all the facilities within your jurisdiction. And the council gave us direction that we needed to bring back to council. Number two, which is go ahead and place restrictions and put it in the same areas that were marijuana facilities, which generally located, which is light industrial and industrial. So we are, something that we need to get on your agenda to approve. But they still are quite a ways away from approving any mushroom facilities.
Okay, thank you.
So we have time?
We have time, yes.
Do we also have time to do we have time to strengthen our code? Would it be appropriate to do it now as opposed to, even though this is likely, what just happened is likely going to Luba? Would it be appropriate to do it now to put back in whatever was wrongly omitted? Or would it be appropriate to wait until the Luba hearing is concluded?
It would probably be appropriate to do it now.
Okay.
And to try to figure out what actually happened, how it got deleted.
I would like that.
Somebody just cut a page.
I would like that to be a top priority aside from strengthening back up the code, finding out why it got admitted. It can't, I mean, I have a hard time believing
We're going to blame people who don't work here.
Well, I'm fine if you want to bring back Mr. Dambgen, then sit him down. But yeah, I would like that to be a part of this process, 100%. Councilor Whitman?
So the moratorium, though, would, would that stop this Khalifa licensing?
So the moratorium though, would, would that stop this Khalifa licensing?
That's up to Luba, but yes, if, if this gets, if this is adopted, it would be my intention to file a motion to dismiss. Any appeal they file because it is moot, at least until the election period. And if Luba didn't do that, then to stay the case until, just leave it alone.
I, I think one good thing to bring up though, is also the tax base that has been lost on. Year over year over year over year, on the one that we do have, I know that was brought up with Eric before. That it is not the revenue maker that they said it was gonna bring to towns. And I think it's a good idea to bring it back to voters, because I know a lot of voters were persuaded by. The revenue that it was supposed to bring into communities and the community that, you know, the dollars it was supposed to bring in and, and generate. But it is just year over year been losing, losing funds back to the cities and it's not doing what it said it was gonna do. So I think, I'm in favor of sending it back to the voters.
Okay, uh, councillor One?
I have a quick question on the code. If you, if. That language was in. The code, like we were talking like. This would have not been an issue. So if we just put it back in the code, does it even matter? If it is voted on by the public or if it's in the code, then it's never gonna be an issue again?
It will either be, become permanent uh, in November of twenty four, or else it will go away if the voters voted down. It will not be a prohibition at that point if the voters voted down. So this does give you then a year and a half to go through the code. Your staff has a lot of things that they're looking at because of these CFEC rules and transportation plan rules. DLCD has dumped on cities and their legislature is continuing to do that. But it'll give them a year and a half to go through the code with a fine tooth comb and, and really work it out in an orderly fashion. So this will take some of the heat off of them, where I had just answered the mayor a minute ago that, yeah, it makes sense to do it immediately. I could feel the heat coming.
Okay, I just have to say, I fully support bringing it to the people and letting them decide. I realize sometimes that. That's why they elected us is to help move these processes along and whatnot, but I think this is important enough to bring to them in the first place. Let them decide and um, I think that's the best measure that I can think of, so.
Councillor Glance?
Yeah, I used to be a lot more pro on the marijuana, but what concerned, what I was comfortable with was that I felt like cities. Had control to put it in an appropriate time, place, and manner. Whatever that expression was, and I feel like the state's taking over a lot of that control. Which makes me really anxious, and if nothing else, even before it goes to the voters, I'd love to see, you know, what else the state comes out with or changes. That we would have no control if otherwise.
Yeah. Councillor White?
Yeah, and I also think um, back when Troutdale voted to approve marijuana by a slim margin. But I also think they had faith in our planning commission to, to manage that, and they did an excellent job. If that loophole hadn't occurred, we would have been, we still would have been fine. So I think maybe the best, best way is to protect it, but what I'm getting at is, we also had a different world back then. We had a lot, the police had time and they were enforcing laws and they had the manpower. That doesn't seem to be the case, so. It's kind of um, a different experience than it, than it would have been back then. So I'm, I'm in favor of the moratorium.
Okay, any other comments or questions from council? Clarification?
I did have one.
Yeah, councillor White.
Question, sorry. Um, so if, if it goes back to the voters, they approve it, it would, we would still have our zoning laws intact? The, the ones we currently, or the ones we used to have prior to the loophole?
No, no, we, we, I think the staff would still wanna go back if, if, whether, when the voters, if they approved it. You would still wanna go have staff go back and, and put some of that back in because it applies to other situations.
They'd have that opportunity.
Yeah.
They'd give them a year and a half to do. Excellent.
Okay. If nothing further, um, I'm gonna open up the public hearing part of this to uh, have public comment. Public comments now open. Uh, if there's anybody on Zoom wishing to make public comment regarding uh, matter eight point one. Uh, now's the time, go ahead and unmute yourself, state your name and city of residence for the record.
Oh, Wilcox Troutdale.
Mr. Wilcox, good evening.
It's like I'm the only one left out here. Everybody else has gone to bed. Oh, okay.
If I may say, we missed you. You haven't spoken, you said, Paul.
Well, I had to kinda stay out of the uh, planning commission one. I do have prepared comments though on this one. I have just two brief comments. I'd remind or inform council that Troutdale voters approved measure ninety one on the November twenty fourteen ballot. A margin of nearly four hundred votes or seven percent. The prohibition against retailers within one thousand feet of his city park was a restriction. Beyond the state requirement enacted by the planning commission and council at the time. To essentially keep the businesses out of the central business district by using Mayor Square as the basis. I'll also add that councillor Caswell is conspicuously absent. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Uh, anybody in council chambers wishes to make a comment? Now's the time. And we're moving back to the five minute time allotment.
Okay, Tanny Staffenson Troutdale resident. Um, I would be in favor of the resolution. Um, I think it gives our staff and our teams time to. Get some of the pieces of the code back into place that we can do. Uh, I think that would be good. It would buy us a little bit of time to prevent people from trying to get in facilities while the, the gates down kind of. Is be a way to look at it, because I think we could have unintended consequences. And the other thing, being someone that's been in business, you know, because somebody doesn't testify against something doesn't mean they're a opponent of it. And I think we need to consider that, and some of the decisions that were made years ago were made because of people in neighboring businesses in areas were like, please don't help us. And uh, you know, and, and we tried as much as we could to kind of accommodate the residents and the businesses all alike. And I think that's important that we do that.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else wish to make a comment? Yep.
Diane Castillo White Troutdale, and I'm also in the agreeance to uh, adopt this ordinance. I'd just like to also mention that currently uh, we don't have an undue burden to get our recreational, our medicinal, medicinal um, stuff. We, we have, we have a location in Troutdale, and also there's a number in Gresham and also the, in Wood Village. So I'm just saying, we're not putting, we would, we would not be putting an undue burden on the citizenry of this use. In talking about safety, I advise you to uh, to, to read up on Portland and how it compares to the rest of the United States. Uh, I'll just read a headline for the one line of the week, armed robbers continue to terrorize Portland's cannabis retailers. Um, this is July twenty seventh, twenty twenty two, and they talk about the pace at which the, the armed robberies occur. We're still dealing in cash, so that's a consideration, also that people are coming in with armed robbery because they, they deal in cash at this time. Um, and then, um, also, um, I appreciate the time to, to look at it for the year and a half because. Uh, back to the original intent, uh, Paul spoke to a bit of that, that um. In, in not getting sued and not knowing what would occur if the city of Troutdale did not allow a, a uh, dispensary located in Troutdale. Uh, they came up with a area that they thought would be fitting, um, and, and again, what Paul said, just uh, let us go to the downtown, the four blocks and just. That not be an issue to anybody, that it may be an issue too. And uh, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Diane. Anyone else?
Adrian Kestner Troutdale, um. I uh, I recognize that uh, that my opinions on the subject are um, I should say, not in the majority. On this, but the, the main point I wanna make at this time is that from an optical standpoint. I see the, the timing of this ordinance in conjunction with the denial of the Khalifa decision. And the anticipated uh, uh, appeal to Luba is, is optically extremely problematic to me. It, it looks like it could potentially set a very dangerous precedent that could um, in my mind. Prompt uh, certain forces in Salem to, to try to take even more. Um, direction from the local jurisdictions than they already have. And, and that kind of precedent, setting that kind of precedent, even if it's only optical. Concerns me greatly.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. All right, I'm gonna go ahead and close pub.
Could, could I speak one last piece of information that I, I forgot to say?
Do you want me to close public hearing first?
No, no.
Okay.
No.
Mister Ed Trump, you?
It's, it's only that I was informed the last few days that OLCC has stopped issuing new retail store licenses. They're only allowing transfers at this point in time because they, they see a market over supply. And for those of you who are uh, uh, strong capitalists, you can wonder why the state is interfering with the market that way.
Yeah. Okay, now I'm gonna close public hearing. Public hearing is closed. Um, without any more uh, comments or deliberation from council, I'd entertain a motion. Councillor Ripma?
Yes, I'll make a motion. I move adoption of an ordinance approving a ban on additional recreational marijuana retailers. And referring the ordinance to the electors of the city and declaring an emergency.
Second.
Seconded by councillor Glance. In just a point of order, in order for eight point one to pass, it needs to be unanimous. Okay, all right, Sarah?
Councillor White?
Yes.
Councillor Wittrin?
Yes.
Councillor Glance?
Yes.
Councillor Ripma?
Yes.
Councillor One?
Yes.
Mayor Lauer?
Yes. Passes. Thank you very much, uh, ladies and gentlemen. Uh, we're gonna move on to agenda item number, we're bypassing eight point two. Moving, moving on to agenda item number nine, staff communications, and then don't forget, we have another meeting after this. A long night, ladies and gentlemen.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Number one, don't forget that next week on March twenty first, we have a URA meeting, next Tuesday night at seven o'clock. Where we will receive the report from TCAB as to their uh, preference list or development for the URA, as I, I emailed you all yesterday with the link. Um, it would really be helpful if y'all could review the three interviews and the TCAB discussion of the three finalists. Um, it would, it would make it a very productive meeting next week, uh, before the event. At some point in the future, we'll talk about it next Tuesday and make a decision on who we should begin negotiating with. Uh, number two, um, we have a wonderful new reporting tool online for streets. Uh, we have a great map where you can see any street in, in the, in the city, whether it's county, city, or state. And you can click on it, make a report if there's a pothole. Um, if you wanna check it out, just go to our website, Public Works and Streets. And from that page, you should be able to find the map that popped up to make any uh, street concern expressions. And finally, we are about ready to send out to you all and to the citizens recruiting for committees. So if you have anybody you know that might be interested, let them know to look for the applications coming soon. So that's all I have, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, sir. Uh, agenda item number ten, council communications. Let's go with uh, councillor Wittrin.
Um, with URA coming up next week, I did have a chance to sit down on all the uh, interviews. If anybody has any questions or hard hearing the audio, I don't want some of them, feel free to reach out. I'm glad to add any insight that I can or try to clarify any thing that went on during the interviews. So, that's all I got.
Thanks, sir. Councillor White?
I'll pass.
Councillor One?
Two things. I just wanted to address the. One of the, one of the public comments right at the end. I feel like we're dealing with two separate issues on the Khalifa appeal and then our wanting to create a um. A, a, a vote to the people and. Um, I think from what I've, just from what I've heard from the community in my limited engagement is that. People would ra, most of the community would rather not have marijuana dispensaries directly in Trout, the city of Troutdale. And so I feel like with that, let's put it to the vote of the people. I feel like with our appeal, it was down to one issue, whether it was a school or not, or just determined to be a school. Which I feel like our staff and city attorney uh, convinced me enough that it was a school where. Um, high schoolers attend, and I think that that is important to separate those two things out, and that's how I saw it. And so I just wanted to kind of communicate that um, as just like a different, different uh, opinion or way of to look at that. And then the second thing is, is that uh, this Friday, the Legacy Mount Hood Family Birth Center is gonna be closing. Is a extremely hot button topic issue, if one in my life, uh, because I will directly have to deal with that. And anybody listening or that reads this, uh, the, or watches the council um, videos, which I'm sure it's tons of people.
A million.
Yeah, millions upon millions. I, I urge you to um, complain about this, and I say complain, I, I, I say that strongly. I um, had the uh. Honor of going to Legacy Mount Hood today, and they are not prepared for this one bit. So I find it hard sometimes to separate out my professional career from this, but I think it's important enough that. That the community knows that Legacy Mount Hood is not prepared for this um, in any of the slightest for what's gonna happen. And um, it's, it's, it's important that people complain to the right people and to the right people of the state to get. And hold, hold uh, them accountable for their actions in the detriment to our community directly, so. That's all, thank you.
Councillor Ripma?
Uh, uh, just a couple of questions uh, from, when, when is the budget, when are the budget meetings coming?
April seventeenth and nineteenth are two scheduled dates.
Were you looking for Eric?
Very good.
Well, I remember, but I was looking to make sure you told me no, but, you know, yeah, April seventeen.
April seventeenth and nineteenth, okay, good. And I also, I want us to deal with that uh, the development code. Error or omission. As soon as we can, you know, as soon as it's realistic, but um, let's fix it.
Councillor Glance?
Uh, yeah, for budget, we also have Monday, the twenty fourth of, for a third meeting if needed. And then the other thing I just wanted to bring up is that there is um, a lot of stuff going on in Salem right now that is taking away. A lot of uh, our ability to self-regulate as a city is pretty concerning. LOC is a good source to look through some of that and the state website as well.
All right, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. So I'll say uh, also that I think we're in for a fight. I think that uh, Mr. Kestner's comments were correct. And I think we're gonna draw the eye or at least the glare from Salem towards us, but I for one am ready for the fight. Uh, and uh, we, I along with uh, state representative Zach Hudson, Ricky Ruiz, uh, Senator Gorsick. Uh, Representative Heeb, um, there's a couple other signers. We sign a strongly worded letter um, to OHA and Legacy uh, this week. I'm, I'm sorry, Friday, and sent that off. Uh, obviously, you know, we're not really. We're not looking, uh, we're not looking. we're not looking, we're not looking in our mailboxes for any type of positive answer. But just so you know, we've still been working on it on the back end, trying to get some sort of recognition from OHA